Okay, we're called to order, whoa. Called to order the Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting of January 21, 2020. Call to roll, please.
Commissioner Hill.
President.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Uring.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Dennis, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, will you?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, you did that well, you're my go-to guy from now on. Can I get a motion on the approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda be approved as staff recommends with item 5A being continued to February 3, 2020.
Is there a second?
And a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Could we move maybe 5B and C up?
Out of 4A?
Yeah, just to kind of let that audience move on, would we be in agreement on that?
I'd second that.
Sorry, yeah, whatever was after 4A, yeah.
So that would be, the friendly amendment would be to move items 5B, 5C, and 6A to be heard before item 4A. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
I'll accept it.
And then do you have a second?
You got a second?
I'll second, yeah, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll now go to item 5B. Oops, what, what, what? I'm sorry, yeah, I probably ought to do the other stuff, shouldn't I? Report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January 10, 2020.
Staff report on the update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process, Richard.
Good evening Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. I'll give you a quick update of where we are this week. This is a slide showing the approvals we've issued for single-family residences. I want to say this adds up to roughly 212 homes that have been approved by the Planning Department. As you can see, the majority of them are like-for-like rebuilds with the 10% addition. On this chart here, you can see the types of permits we're receiving and how many for each month since the fire. This month so far has been kind of a slow month, as you can see our numbers are much lower. But in general, the blue lines that you see there, those are PV applications. Majority of the folks take advantage of those. And to date with this month, we've only received about four planning verifications. And other than that, we got one CDP, one APR, that would be an addition beyond 10%, or perhaps a height increase above 18 feet, and two de minimis waivers for wastewater systems. So it's, this month has not seen as much as the past. To date, we've waived almost $1.9 million in fees. Once again, these are all the fees associated with the fire rebuild process that are charged by the city. And these are the numbers for single-family residences as they stand in the Building and Safety Division. So they have 91 projects that are in the plan check process. 68 projects for new single-family homes we've approved in the Planning Department, but they have not yet been submitted. I know that the building safety folks are actively working with those folks trying to get the applications in. There are 52 building permits that are active for the reconstruction of single-family homes. And to date, we only have one house completed, but I think that number is going to change by next week. Are there any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Richard, questions from the commissioners? No, just, Richard, could you just restate, you know, to get your fees eliminated, when do they have to have their plan in?
The fee waiver program, the way it's been adopted by the City Council, will end currently at the end of this fiscal year, so that's the end of June. So any fees that get charged after that, unless there's a change by council, those fees will have to be paid by the homeowner.
Thank you, get your plans in, folks.
And approved.
Written in oral communications in the public, do we have anything? Nothing, good. Planning Commissioner, questions and staff comments? Nothing?
I've got one page I'd like to share.
Okay.
I've been on the commission a year now, and so I can offer a few reflections on what we're doing here and some data points. It takes a while to get a new house approved. Our community and the state have imposed on us a fairly unique set of environmental and coastal regulations. There are multiple planning stages upstream of us, and then the commission here, and then downstream, there's plan check and other hoops. What happens before an application gets to us here is a conversation for another day, but I realized it might be interesting to look at how applications go after they come to us. And so last week, I visited the sites of the new houses that we approved in the first three months of my tenure here. So those are the ones that have had at least nine months since we approved them. There are 15 houses, and that doesn't count the many other things we addressed in the same period. The houses already underway, the consent items, administrative CDPs, ordinances, CUPs for restaurants, parking lots, all that other stuff. So just the applications for the brand-new single-family houses, 15 of them, in three months. Driving around, I found that 13 of them have not yet broken ground, at least nine months later. Of the two that have, one is owned by a billionaire, the other by a frequent observer of this commission, people who understand how to make things happen. Three of the stalled projects have for-sale signs out. Others might have already been flipped, or might just have money troubles. Meanwhile, as I was looking at those first three months, I realized I could calculate how much time we spend on an item in these hearings. It turns out in those six meetings, we addressed 44 items, which is an average of 35 minutes each. And I was new then and have become more efficient, so now we probably spend less than 30 minutes per item. You know, some go quickly, others take a few hours. And it strikes me that deliberating for an hour on a project is not exorbitant, because for every applicant who might think we're being too picky, there may be many silent neighbors who would want us to take the time to scrutinize a project, to be certain it doesn't have undue impacts, because they understand that the next application we look at might be right next door to them. And here, it may be worth noting that with respect to the Woolsey Fire, the commission has not slowed down, denied, or otherwise impaired any rebuilding permits. And indeed, we've done what we can to speed those up and help people get back into their homes, figuring out where to cut red tape to prevent opportunistic new view determinations, get fee waivers from Waterworks, and so on. And finally, I recently heard a comment that some commissioners seem unapproachable, and I'm no doubt included in that. And I hope that's not the case, because we're here to serve the public interest. And that means hearing from you. And the more the community weighs in with us, the better our decisions will be. So speaking for myself, I would just reassure you and urge you not to be shy, and just don't approach me before I've had my morning coffee, or I'll bite your head off, thank you.
Okay, John?
I just wanted to comment on that. All of our emails are listed on the website and our phone numbers. So we are approachable. There's a lot of commissions where there's, you know the person's name, but you have no idea to get a hold of them. I know any one of us will talk to anybody at any time. So I think that that's really not close to being true.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of call out something which came up during our last session, because I believe it's going to come up again tonight, and I just wanted to kind of put it back on the table for a second. And that's this concept of how we evaluate how much space in a restaurant is included when calculating the ratio of how many spaces for how many square feet of restaurant, et cetera. So just to kind of float it out there, I know it's something that's not totally locked down, and I do still think it's something that we want to get better clarity on, so that we're going to, this applicant's going to feel some pressure for the La Paz property because of it, but I'm more concerned about their first restaurant that comes in. If we don't have things well-defined by then, an even more higher level of pressure can come on, because we just, as a city, don't want to continue to make mistakes where we underpark not having properly accounted for service area. That was it.
Well, all I can say is I agree that this commission has not had a great deal to do, or not any to do, with the rebuild process. As somebody who's going through the rebuild process, I couldn't be more delighted.
Good evening, everybody. The only two things that I was going to make mention of are that at the commission's next meeting on February 3, we will be hearing the skate park, temporary skate park, CDP, and I believe we will have the accessory dwelling unit ordinance on that agenda, if not, it'll be shortly thereafter. And that's all I have.
Okay, now we'll go to 5B.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
Oh, I think we have a-
Have I missed something?
Consent calendar, we have a few items.
Oh, all right, yeah, good idea. Consent calendar, we have, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I thought we would move that to the back, okay. We have, is there anybody who wants to pull something from the consent calendar? There's only two items. And it's, is that a receive and file? No, it's an extension, is there a motion, do we need anything on? Yeah?
Move staff's recommendation.
Recommendation. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, it is unanimous. Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I suggest we hear 5B and 5C together, since they're same shopping center, same type of equipment.
Yeah, let me see if that's okay, Bonnie, is that right? Can we do B and C together?
Yeah, any objection from the applicant? Okay.
Okay, so we're going to now turn to item 5B and item 5C. These, this is, 5B is Administrative Plan Review 19-141 and Variance 19-032. This is for the project of, an electrical project at 233-59 Pacific Coast Highway. And 5C is Administrative Plan Review 19-142 and Variance 19-033. This is for the property at 3822 Cross Creek Road. Staff?
Good evening Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. I'm David Eng, and I'm the planner for the two applications listed on tonight's agenda as, listed as items 5B and 5C. And as you've already desired, I want to explain to the audience that I'll be presenting both of these applications together. Reason for this is because the two applications are components of a larger project for new electric vehicle charging stations and associated equipment for two companies, Electrify America and Tesla. These will be implemented at Malibu Village Shopping Center. Approval of administrative plan reviews and variances at both of these parcels are necessary for the whole project to move forward. The project sites where the two applications are located in the Civic Center District is shown here in the vicinity map. Here we have an aerial photograph showing the project sites as two parcels that compose the Malibu Village Shopping Center. At 3822 Cross Creek Road is labeled in green, and is the shopping center's northern parcel. 233-59 Pacific Coast Highway is labeled in gold, and it's the shopping center's southern parcel. Both parcels are zone commercial visitor serving. Labeled in blue are surrounding parcels characterized by other commercial uses that include shopping centers, offices, and a gas station. To the east of the shopping center is a parcel that appears to be used as a staging area, and it includes a portion of the creek, as shown here as well. Here are some photographs of the adjacent development. Starting from the top left, we have office uses across the street on Cross Creek. And to the right of that, we have the Malibu Country Mart. The bottom left, we have Shell Gas Station, and on the bottom right, we have the adjacent parcel to the east with a glimpse of the creek that's located right there. So I'll start by going over the project proposed at 233-59 Pacific Coast Highway. This is highlighted in green. The parcel, the project area is located along the eastern portion of the parcel, as shown here. And the project includes construction of power distribution, switchboard assemblies, and power cabinets of up to 7'8" tall on new 4-inch concrete pads. It includes a request for a variance number 19-032 to reduce the required 41.8-foot side yard setback by 61, excuse me, 66.51% to 14 feet. Here are some site photos of the project area, this is the front elevation of the main shopping building. Here is a shot of the rear of that building that shows the general project area along an existing driveway. This is the northern edge, or northern portion of that project area where electrical equipment is proposed for Electrify America. And on the south end, the project area is where equipment is proposed for Tesla. This elevation depicts the proposed equipment for Electrify America, along with the existing electrical cabinets and the transformer box that are on a raised walkway. The proposed equipment here is highlighted in blue here, and here we see the height of the equipment from grade. The Malibu Municipal Code allows for electrical equipment to be located within the required side yard setback, provided that the equipment does not exceed 6 feet in height. Because the equipment is shown here, on top of the proposed concrete pads, reach height of up to 8 feet, this provision, or it does not comply with this provision. Here's an elevation showing the proposed electrical equipment for Tesla. And highlighted in blue here, we also see that the two pieces of proposed equipment exceed 6 feet tall. While the municipal code allows for the planning director to reduce the 41'10" side yard setback by up to 20% under the site plan review process, here we see that the distance of the proposed equipment from the property line is shown in red exceeds this amount, therefore it requires a variance from Planning Commission. The applicant's requesting a side yard setback reduction of more than 66.51% to, excuse me, more than 20% to 14 feet. If the height of the equipment were not to exceed 6 feet tall, a variance in site plan review would not be required. The applicant's demonstrated that since the existing power source is located at the rear of the building, located associated equipment in a conforming location would be impractical. Further, locating the equipment in a more visible location would detract from the aesthetic character of the shopping center and surrounding neighborhood. So now I'll move on to the northern parcel, this is an aerial view of Malibu Village's northern parcel at 3822 Cross Creek Road. The scope of work to occur there includes electric vehicle charging stations for Electrify America and Tesla. A total of 11 stations are proposed. Three are for Electrify America, eight are for Tesla. With the reconfiguration of the existing parking spaces, there will be a net reduction of four parking spaces. However, even with this reduction, the shopping center will maintain 304 spaces, whereas 257 are currently required by code. The project also proposes electrical equipment that includes a PME, transformer, and switchboard. These photos are just illustrative, they're not exactly as they are proposed. And lastly, there's a request for a variance number 19-033 to reduce the required 63-foot rear yard setback by 95% to 3 feet. Here's a site plan showing the project area along the east side of the parcel. Here are some site photographs, looking east toward the project area from the main shopping areas. This is the project area, the area of the parking that's along the eastern edge of the parcel. Close-up shot of the area where the electrical equipment, transformer boxes, and so forth are proposed to be located. And here's a view looking back from that project area towards the main shopping areas. Here are elevations depicting the proposed equipment along the project area. The red dash line that you'll see in the images are a match line for the two drawings. As with the application, 233-59 Pacific Coast Highway, here in blue, we see proposed equipment that will exceed 6 feet tall. And similarly, because the existing rear setback is 63 feet, as shown in the green line near the center of that image, the reduction of the setback by more than 20% to 3 feet requires a variance from Planning Commission. Here are some additional images showing the location of the proposed equipment in plan view and the relationship to the property line, shown in red, and a new 3-foot setback shown in green. And here's just another view of the project area as we pan a little bit to the right. So although conforming locations for the electrical vehicle, charging stations, and equipment do exist, the applicant has demonstrated how this is not desirable. Locating the charging stations and equipment in the central portions of the parking lot area require a distance from the electrical source and other equipment that exceeds industry standards. It would also require trenching through utility easements that run through this parcel. It may be a little difficult to see in this image, but you do see some lines that run kind of throughout the parking lot area. And locating the equipment in the more central areas of the parcel would also detract from the aesthetic character of the shopping center and surrounding neighborhood. So that said, based on the analysis of the proposal and findings for a variance, staff recommends for 233-59 Pacific Coast Highway adopting Resolution Number 20-12 and approving APR 19-141 and Variance Number 19-032, inclusive of the conditions listed in the resolution that you have before you. And staff also recommends adopting 43822 Cross Creek Road Resolution 20-13 and approving APR 19-142 and Variance 19-033, inclusive of the conditions listed in the resolutions. This concludes my presentation. Staff, along with the project applicant who's present here tonight, were available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, thank you. Ex parte communication disclosures? I've been to both sites numerous times, but nothing on this one.
I took a peek at the site and had a brief chat with Commissioner Marks.
I've been to the site hundreds of times, but nothing regarding this.
No additional disclosures.
Questions of staff? I have one. Assuming these electric cars, charging stations, they're going to continue to be in demand. If they want to put more in, can they just, do they have the infrastructure to do more? Or is that going to require additional work on top of that, do we know?
If the applicant wanted to do more, they would, well, this may be something for them to answer, provided that they have the equipment in place, like the transformer boxes and switchgear boxes, for example. They could certainly have the capacity to install more. Insulation of any equipment, such as the Tesla chargers that are not more than 6 feet tall, those would require another administrative plan.
It was more of a question of, you know, the infrastructure, the infrastructure they're building now, will that enable them to add on just additional stations? Or if they want to add on additional stations, do they have to add a lot more infrastructure to get that done?
Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that, I'm sure the applicant can answer that for you.
We'll get that from the applicant, anything else?
I have questions mainly for the applicant, and maybe staff can weigh in at that point.
Okay.
A couple, just on your, I think it was like slide six or so, you showed the height. I couldn't quite figure out, is the height inclusive of the pad? Is that, you said up to 8 feet, was that from grade?
In that, in that case, the 8 feet did include the pad, the 4-inch pad and a 7'8" tall equipment box.
So from existing grade, you're going 8, up to 8?
Correct, yes.
And then, um, sorry. The other quick one, and the applicant might be able to better speak with this, but do we have any rules on usage of the spots if, say, demand is high, but there happen not to be electric vehicles that day? Can non-electric vehicles park there, are there any conditions, or it's just strictly for electric?
At this point in time, we, the property does have a surplus of parking spaces, so I don't see that to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
We don't currently have any requirements, one way or the other, with respect to that.
Okay, because I park in that EV spot in the lot, kind of at the front, and it always just seems to be electric vehicles, and if we bring in another 8 or 10, or whatever it ends up being, I'd just be concerned that we could hit a limit, so, thank you.
John?
Yeah, could you put up the diagram for, the plot plan for C, for the southern property? Now, that's C, that's the southern property?
Oh, this is the northern property, so B was the southern.
Run next to PCH.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
This, let's see if I can get this to work. But the blue area, does that eliminate all but 14, 14.7 feet of that driveway? And is that driveway still usable?
The driveway is still usable, the driveway's not being touched.
Well, if the equipment is, only gives 14, 14.7 feet to the property line, and, and, and normal driveways are wider than that, where do the cars park to charge? They charge and park in the driveway?
No, so for this property, the project only involves electrical equipment. There are no charging stations on this parcel. And the charging equipment is off of the driveway in, behind a curb that already exists.
Think of that as sort of like the weatherhead.
And I'll also add that this driveway is a one-way driveway, cars can only go north.
So are there any parking spots on this, on this parcel?
Not, not in, well, not in the project area.
Where are they?
All the, with respect to the electric vehicle charging parking spaces, those are all on the 3822 Cross Creek parcel.
So why are these electrical boxes here farther away from those?
Perhaps it's something the applicant can explain better than I can. There is just equipment that is necessary to be located on this parcel. This parcel is, from my understanding, is where the power source for the shopping center is.
So the power source comes in here and then goes over to the, to the other stations?
It goes through equipment that's proposed here, and it's interconnected- It goes through equipment that's proposed here, and it's interconnected with the equipment that's also on the, that's on the north parcel.
Has there been any study about the capacity of power for, for this particular shopping center?
I, I don't have that information.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Let's open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any speaker slips? No applicants here?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Okay, I think there's going to be a few questions for you, so I'd like you to give your name, and before you leave the place, will you fill out a speaker slip and give it to the clerk here, so we'll have a record of who you are?
Okay, absolutely. Good evening, my name is Brienne Mockaby. I work for Black and Beach. I'm representing the applicants for this, both Tesla and Electrify America, who are both here with me this evening. We have been working extensively with both the property owner and the city planning department to find the best location for the charging dispensers and the associated equipment, and have been trying to use underutilized areas in the Malibu Village parking lot. Tesla and EA want to provide a service to the customers of the shopping center with minimal impact to the parking and to the aesthetics of the shopping center. And we believe that the current design is the best possible location, and ask that you approve the setback variance. Should I respond to your question about infrastructure? Okay, I'm going to let Tesla do a little, because they have been working on this project a little bit longer than Electrify America, so they have a little background for you.
Good evening, everybody. Nadir O'Shaughnessy, I'm a senior manager at Tesla, and I'm overseeing the design and the coordination with the local utility company for the build out of the site. To answer Mr. Maz's question about, I'm sorry, Mr. Irving's questions about the infrastructure in place, can it support future growth? On the utility side, there's equipment in place that we can utilize for future growth. When it comes to the Tesla and EA-specific cabinets, which are in that side planner next to that alleyway, they'll support only the 12 charging stations that we're trying to build out.
How about John's question about the access to the back alleyway there?
Yeah, I heard it, but why are they separated by so much, and why are they there?
Yeah, so when EA and both Tesla were scouting the locations, we've been working at the site for over two years, trying to find suitable location for the equipment while not compromising on stall count in terms of taking away parking stalls from other patrons not trying to charge their car. So we typically look at vegetative areas, you know, landscape islands, and this was the area where there was open space, out of sight, out of mind. Originally, we're looking at the southern parcel near PCH to put, to place the equipment adjacent to PCH. We had to build a large retaining wall, potentially take up parking stalls. It would create a lot more work than we were intending to do, so that ended up being the opportune location to put the equipment while not compromising access for the, for fire trucks and all that.
What about the total capacity of the lines running down the coast highway? How many stations could they take?
So we've worked closely with Southern California Edison in assessing the grid and making sure it's, it's built up to support Tesla's need, EA's need, and future growth. So the infrastructure we're putting in from the PME to the transformer, it's not going to compromise growth that the shopping center might need for additional power. We're actually adding to, adding the capacity.
Now, the area where you have your charging stations has been flooded in the past, up to probably six feet. What happens to your equipment when it's underwater?
So our equipment is designed to be water repellent, and that if there is a flood, I mean, we have, we have quarterly and weekly maintenance site visits to make sure the equipment is, integrity is in place, but if there was a catastrophic flood, where it's greater than normal, then we would go and protect the equipment, but the equipment should be working just fine, unless it's fully submerged, which I doubt would happen in this location.
Oh, that's where it flooded. The river's right there. Is there any danger to the public if your, your, your stations are on and it's covered with, say, five feet of water?
No, no danger to the public at all. Yeah, there are a lot of safety mechanisms within the hardware itself where, even if a vehicle were to touch a charging post and move it just by a couple millimeters, the power was shut off. So there's minimal chance of any harm to the public.
Following the prior question, I wonder why you didn't put the charging stations on the south side of the building, because it seems like, A, you'd be closer to the main equipment, so you'd have less impedance and lower cost. B, you, the shopping center would be, in effect, advertising that they're in favor of progress, and hey, here are charging stations, rather than hiding them behind, on the other side. And C, there they could be against the side of the building, whereas elsewhere, they're standing out and against vegetation and, in effect, affecting that view. And D, there, out near the front, if it's an aesthetic concern, there's a gas station right next door. So it's, it seems sort of part and parcel that you'd have the stations up there. It sounds like you looked at that and ruled it out, though, I'm just wondering why.
Yeah, so early 2018, we did look at that location, and it was, to your point, it was an opportune location for both Tesla and EA to showcase the charging stations and be visual for customers. But once we did entertain that idea and we, and we designed it out, we realized that we had to cut that entire slope along PCH and build a 50-foot-long retaining wall to fit the utility equipment and Tesla's equipment.
Could you not leave the utility where you've proposed it and put the charging stations on the side, on the side against the building and not go near the highway?
Yeah, so the, so the charging posts themselves, the current location was after many conversations with Jamestown and, and their ownership group to figure out where they, as the owners, would like our charging stalls. And initially, we're looking at the front, and with their, their discretion involved, we decided to go to the back, because that's what they wanted, and both Tesla and EA assessed, you know, what's the most efficient technical design we can create at this site, and we, we realized that in that location, it would make most sense.
So that, that might be a spot, if there is any future growth, that maybe at that point, you move around there. What about explosion risks? We're right next to the ESHA, the habitat area, and when you hear stories of the lithium-ion batteries occasionally will explode, this is a place where we could set a fire pretty readily if we're right next to that. What, how, how likely is that to happen?
That, that is not likely with our charging equipment at all. There's a lot of safety mechanisms built in, and then we do a really detailed job in, in inspecting our equipment and making sure that it's kept up to its integrity that it's designed for. There's been no cases of, of any kind of fire explosions when it comes to the charging stations itself.
But, but there are with the cars, and they're, they would be right there by the, by the wall, right? So is that, I, I'm not really familiar, I've heard this happens, I don't know how, how much.
Yeah, for the, for the few vehicle accidents that come to mind, where Teslas were involved, it, it was inconclusive on whether the batteries were the source of the explosion. There are many other details to those, those accidents, but none of which would be anything to consider for these charging stations, where the vehicles would be coming in less than five miles an hour to back in into the charging stalls, and these are customers that charge their car multiple times a day and are very aware of the etiquette versus driving on a freeway.
Can I, just to kind of sharpen that one up? So do you, are you aware of any cases where the car has been charging at the charging station, and then the battery failed, leading to a fire? Or have they always been in transit or somehow else when the vehicle was driving?
Yeah, no cases that I'm aware of where vehicles are charging.
Okay. And then my last question would be, this, this would involve removal of the screening plants that are there where the main utility equipment is now? Is there any provision to restore any sort of visual aesthetic thing there? Or are we suddenly looking at more of an equipment wall right next to, as we drive across the bridge and see the shopping center there? Is it going to look sort of industrial now?
Yeah, so where the Tesla and EA cabinets are going in that side alleyway, we're adding in a couple plants in between the cabinets to kind of soften the look. But where the utility equipment is going to be placed, we have to abide by National Electric Code and national standards for the utility companies to create clear space. So then, utility workers can come in and have clear, flat working space to access the equipment in case of an emergency or fire or anything like that. So adding some plants, we kind of used up all the square footage we had available, so no plans for it now.
Okay, John?
Is there any signage involved in this application?
Any what?
Signage.
Signage.
So people can find the stations.
Yeah, so we do have signage for the ADA stalls, so people experiencing disabilities know where to park if they're driving a Tesla. And then, within the user interface of the vehicles themselves, it, it does a really good job of either driving the driver to the station, or the driver can drive themselves to the station. It's all built in within the, within the user interface.
So the shopping center itself isn't asking, isn't asking for a sign? Okay.
Yeah, a couple more.
Just kind of a technical question first, maybe this is more to staff, but did the, were the applicants, applications split just because that's how the lot split? So you had, and, or B and C that way?
Correct, it's, it's only because we're dealing with two separate parcels that we have the application done this way.
Okay, cool. And the other question, probably more towards Nigera. I've seen some, some topics covered on TV that I know VW introduced a concept in January 2019 where they would effectively have a battery on wheels that would carry the charge to the vehicle. So effectively, it would return to a home station, get its charge, run to the vehicle. Is there any of that contemplated in this design? Is that too far out? Because it seems like, in terms of impact to our infrastructure, something like that would be a better deployment, if that's at all feasible.
Yeah, there's a lot of new, exciting products coming out by a lot of different companies outside of Electrify America and Tesla. On this specific site, it's, it's going to be static in that there's charging stations that drivers come in, plug it themselves, and then drive out. We don't plan to have any kind of self-moving robots to charge those vehicles.
Because they got a couple.
There's a couple in, like, the only site I can think of is up in Silicon Valley at the LinkedIn headquarters. They have a, they charge their cars with robots.
Yeah, we've got a couple robots that patrol that lot, so we're not, they wouldn't be new to the neighborhood. But I, I bring it up mainly just to see if, if, if there, if it would be worth considering some form of delay, or does that technology seem too far out? Because the, most of the questions that are coming up here, and mine in line with them, I just don't like seeing that long a run to carry that high voltage over to charging stations, you know? So if we can't locate it on the south side of the property, and it sounds like that's been thought through pretty well, I just got to ask the question if that would be at all realistic, or that's just too far out, too expensive, something like that? Any, has that been considered at all?
So that technology that you're speaking of, it's, it hasn't been considered for this site, it's just not there yet, and it's not within Tesla or EA's, I guess, list of products that we have. But as far as safety goes, is, we work very closely with the planners at Southern California Edison in making sure our designs are, are within national code and standards when it comes to the primary distance from source of power to the transformer, and then from Tesla EA's equipment to the charging stations, all within National Electric Code, and, and none of it's out of compliance.
Got it, so you just have to use a little larger gauge to get that run, and you're, and you're fine?
Yeah, you know, it's a larger gauge wire, all the wires encased and with conduit, proper soil depths, following all other California building code needs.
And then the last one, just with a saltwater source that close, if, having that, you know, submerged conduit and everything, you're good with that in terms of the environmental conditions? That's all been vetted as well in your design?
Correct, yep.
Okay, cool.
Do you charge to charge a car on these stations? How does, how does that work? What does it cost somebody to charge their Tesla?
Yeah, so there's different pay grades, depending on how much you need to charge by kilowatt-hour. If you need to charge your car 50 miles, it can charge a couple bucks. If you need to charge it 350 miles, it might charge you $10. As for the Tesla charging dispensers, it's, I'm assuming it's very similar with EA's. So it is, there's a number of vehicle owners that are grandfathered into the system that get free charging for a number of years. So it, it all varies depending on the vehicle and the owner.
Okay, this is a question for Bonnie. Is there any regulation of selling electricity and?
Not in the zoning code.
So we, and any taxes associated with selling electricity? Is that in the utility code? I mean, I pay it on my, my electric bill to the city. Are they going to be paying to the city on their electric bill?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
They have to pay the usage for the utility, the same as you?
Yeah, but the city has a tax that overrides that. You pay like 10% more than your electric.
And they're going to mark, do you mark up your electric costs in this, in this model?
We mark up our electric costs? We, we pay whatever Southern California Edison bills us.
And then when you bill to the customer who plugs their Tesla in, you'll mark that up?
There's, there's a number of, of calculations and tiers that go into how much we charge our customers, but ends up being much less than they, they would pay.
Right.
If they were to charge themselves that kilowatt-hour.
So John, my point is that the Tesla will be charged for the power from SCE, they'll pay that tax to the city, right?
That's my question, doesn't seem the city knows whether they would or not.
I can ask that question, I don't have the answer right now.
It's not important, but I think.
Not sure it makes a difference to the planning issues that are involved.
You may want to tell the administration. If there are no other questions, I'll move approval.
Well, we need to have, are you, is there anything else you wish to add to your presentation?
No, unless you have more questions.
Okay, please make sure you sign a speaker slip before you leave. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on, on this matter? These matters, I should say. Hearing none, we're ready for a motion. Let's do two motions on this, since we have two items.
Okay, I move motion number one, that we approve item 5B, 23359 PCH, as staff recommends.
I'll second. That's resolution 20-12, correct?
Yes.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, it's unanimous. Second motion, please.
Move that we approve resolution number, administrative plan review number 19-192 and 19-033, as staff recommends.
Is there a second?
That's a resolution 20-13.
Where are you getting that? Okay, I got it.
It's a resolution that's attached.
That is correct.
First staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Synced it. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, it's unanimous. That includes item 5's B and C. We're now going to go to item 6A, which is a receive and file. I got, oh, I thought this might be 6A.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. This item is a receive and file of the school district's required three-month update on the traffic and circulation at Malibu Elementary School. To refresh your memory, the commission approved a coastal permit last April, and during the planning commission's deliberation on the project, which, again, to remind you, is the, was the transfer of these students from Juan Cabrillo Elementary School to Point Doom Marine Science Elementary School. There was about 185 students that were transferred, and during the planning commission's deliberation on that project, there was a lot of discussion about the potential impacts to traffic and circulation. The resolution includes a requirement for the school district to come back with a six-month detailed traffic report that describes the traffic and circulation issues that they encountered. But the planning commission preferred to have the district come back three months, rather than six months, just to get an update on what the traffic and circulation issues that they, that they were encountering. And, and it also gave the school district an opportunity to provide some suggestions to minimize traffic impacts. This update was required back in November, but the school district needed additional time to finalize their traffic report. So that is before you tonight for your consideration. The school district is here as well to answer any questions you may have, and this does conclude my presentation.
Commissioners, I would just add that when the school district has prepared their six-month review report, we'll be bringing that back to you, and at that time, we'll request direction from you whether you want to continue to receive updates from them on this topic or not.
Okay, keeping in mind that this is a receive and file, are there questions of staff? Sorry?
I have a disclosure.
It's, we're not doing anything, so it doesn't matter who you talk to. Do you have any questions for staff? We're not taking any action.
But there's action that's been taken.
Okay, John, have you got a disclosure?
Yep.
Yes, last public safety meeting, which I attended, the public. the Public Safety Commission held their third meeting on public safety at Point Doom School. And they presented all the traffic data from the little signs that tell you how fast you're going. And that data is in their staff report. They voted to have the Public Safety Department and Commission recommend to the City Council that they add two speed humps on Fern Hill and four on Doom Drive. And that's coming through the city, go through the City Council process, I guess. I don't know how they exactly work. But that's in progress. So it sort of affects their study. That study and this study brings you up to date.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess a few questions or comments. Renika, they recommended the inclusion of an AM time period prohibition on the side by the driveway that goes in, so that cars don't back up as much there? That sounds like a good idea, and I wondered if parents need to walk students in, and they're parking there on the, because it would be sort of the east side. Is there a way to put signage to have them park on Gray Fox, or is that, and they could walk in the other side of the building?
So I understand that in the school district's attempt to address cars that would park along Fern Hill for extended periods of time, they did temporarily prohibit cars to park along Fern Hill in the morning, which resulted in a slew of parents, particularly those that had kindergarten children, that had difficulty getting their children onto campus because there was no parking allowed down on Fern Hill. So I believe they've gone back to just prohibit the parking in the afternoon, but extend that prohibition from the parking lot all the way to the corner of Gray Fox and Fern Hill.
But so in the morning, why couldn't they just park on Gray Fox and walk the kids in the other way?
Maybe the school district might want to address that. I believe that the drop-off and pickup along Gray Fox was like an unofficial location to drop off students.
Are we, yeah.
Give your name, please, and before you leave, can you please fill out a speaker slip and give it to the clerk, so we'll know who you are?
Certainly. My name's Stephen Nacetti. I'm the Bond Program Manager for the district. Gray Fox also has a prohibition on parking in the morning.
Okay. So, sort of intractable. Then my other question is just on the bus ridership. You know, not to sound like the guy who walked to school uphill both ways, but I had to ride a bus forever all through elementary school and junior high, and it seems like, is there no way to compel, I know you can't make them ride the bus, but can you require that they buy the tickets at least? So that, you know, if they live near Cabrillo, they have to support the bus on some level? Maybe that's not constitutional, I don't know.
Well, without putting on a lawyer hat, I think that's not constitutional. In fact, the district recently had an issue with requiring fees for totally unrelated things to this, and did not work out well. But, no, we actually can't force them to buy it. But as you've seen, bus ridership is lower than expected.
It seems like it's not really working, right? Like, why have it at the level you're using it now?
We're getting about five riders per day, and our understanding is that a lot of those are students of parents, that, students of teachers rather, at Malibu Middle and High School. So it's very convenient for them, but, right, but beyond that, it doesn't appear to be getting much ridership.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question on that one, too, sorry. Do you have a sense of, is this just because it's so close to the change, or does this seem like it's, any kind of experience there for a ramp up?
I think it's a good question. Ridership in the first semester was, I think in October is when we first looked at it. We had eight riders per day, a little bit higher on Tuesday afternoons for some reason. And then by December, it had dropped to five riders per day. I don't have January numbers. So we haven't seen it increasing over time, we've seen it decreasing over time. But what we have seen is less of an impact on the drop-off over time. So that has improved obviously coincidentally while ridership has dropped.
So it's kind of flattened out at a low, but it's not going any lower currently, is kind of what you're saying?
For right now, that's what it looks like.
And do we have any other cycles where this area has been through a similar case where we introduced a new service, and it just, if it never took off, it never took off, or we'd seen slow adoption before, or is this just brand new?
So I don't deal enough with transportation and bussing to be able to opine on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, since we aren't taking any action on this, but is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address the commission on this item? Which is a three-month report on the traffic and circulation at Malibu Elementary School. Hearing none, I guess.
I have one last question, Steve.
John?
Can you, yes, can you tell us, has the school population increased or decreased as time goes by?
So the school population naturally increased at the beginning of the school year because we combined the two schools, but it was significantly less than the numbers we had talked about last year. Now, a portion of that is because we, in Malibu, have far fewer students this year than we did last year, potentially because of the fires. So I think we anticipated increasing by somewhere around 180 students at Malibu Elementary School, and my recollection is we actually went up by 105.
So are we under 300? We're 300 now?
I believe we're at 288, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. If nobody else wishes to address the commission, we will close the public hearing, and that will conclude item 6A. We are now at item, the main event of the evening. Ten rounds. Item 4A. This is the Coastal Development Permit Amendment Number 17-009 and Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number 17-010. These are applications to amend, rather, the coastal development permits for the La Paz project. This is located at 23465 Civic Center Way. Staff report? Bonnie, you giving the staff report?
Yes, you get to hear from me tonight. We had a contract planner working on this project, but she's had to withdraw from her Malibu projects for the time being, so I picked it up where she left off. So bear with me a little bit, and the applicants are also here and can address questions. So the application tonight is for changes to the approved La Paz Development Agreement project that are being proposed by the developer to improve the project's design and functionality. The project site is two vacant lots between the County Civic Center parcel and the Park at Cross Creek Shopping Center that we all lovingly refer to as Whole Foods. As approved, the project would reconfigure the two parcels into three parcels. Parcels A and B would be a multi-building commercial complex with office retail and restaurant uses totaling 112,058 square feet. Parcel C would be dedicated to the city for municipal uses. The overall square footage of the project would total 132,058 square feet. The changes proposed do not alter the land use mix or increase the approved square footage, and they don't affect Parcel C. This on the left is the approved layout for the parcels based on the 2008 project. The agenda report covered a lot of the project history, so you can refer to that for more detail. But just briefly, in 2008, the City Council certified the Environmental Impact Report and approved the project, including a development agreement. The development agreement was also accompanied by site-specific development standards that were created specifically for the project. These are called the Town Center Overlay, TCO, is how we refer to it along the way. These were incorporated into the municipal code and the local coastal program. The Coastal Commission certified it in 2010. The EIR also included mitigation measures that the developers required to implement in order to minimize adverse impacts from the project. Some of you may recall that in 2015, the Planning Commission approved a CDP for intersection improvements to add the right turn lane at Cross Creek from PCH. That was one of the traffic mitigation measures. This was completed in 2018. Some other intersection improvements have been implemented as well. You've discussed some of them. The applicant is currently working to complete the conveyance of Parcel C to the city and the payment of $500,000 and the other items required by the development agreement. Meanwhile, the CDP amendment is being processed. It was submitted in 2017. And an addendum to the EIR, this is addendum number two, has been prepared, and that is also part of your agenda packet. So what is before the commission tonight is whether to approve the proposed amendments. I just want to remind everybody that it's not a reconsideration of the approved project. In terms of the effect of the amendments, they would amend the approved design and operation of the original project. If they were not approved, the developer would still be entitled to build the original approved project. If you have questions about details on that, we can discuss that later. So here we have the current proposed site plan. Here we have north oriented to the right. Unfortunately, this is going to flip in one of my future slides, so sorry about that. So Civic Center Way is to the left. The changes deal with building layout, architecture, and onsite circulation. I think the applicant's presentation will go into a little more detail about the differences between the approved project and this project, so I'm not going to dig in too much here. But again, there's no changes to the square footage or the mix of uses. And all the parcel sizes are still the same. So this is, this was included in your agenda packet. It is an overlay of the approved project and the proposed revised project. There were a few things in the agenda report that needed correction based on the project plans that you have attached to your agenda packet. This is from table one on page 12 of 35 in your staff report. Just want to make it clear that there, part of the changes include adjustments to landscaping and open space. And I've highlighted here in red what the changes are. So this, we set this up so that you could tell hopefully easily what the changes were among the project, two different projects. So the landscape area goes down a little bit, the open space area goes up a little bit. The overall increase that results from the project changes is because of driveway consolidations and things like that. The other kind of clarification is that the grading here in the table refers to non-exempt grading. And then in terms of land use changes, as we discussed in the agenda report, there are some adjustments to the height of buildings. Building two is increasing in height, but it's going from 22 to 26 feet rather than 28 feet. And then building six is going from 18 feet to 24 and a half, not 26 feet. There's some buildings getting a little bit taller, a couple of buildings getting a little bit shorter. But again, all of the changes to the architecture comply with the Town Center Overlay standards. There were no, this is just copied from the staff report, there were no changes or corrections to this part of the table. So as we've discussed, there's architectural and sighting changes. One of the other specific things that the applicant is proposing in the amendment is to remove condition number 41 for parcel B. That condition in the City Council resolution called for a special gate for after-hours protection of the buildings on that site. That's not needed any longer as a result of the changes to the layout. There is some additional non-exempt grading, which is the result of utility construction. In the staff report, we referred to that as being related to the change in the slab design getting bigger, but that's the exempt grading. This is non-exempt grading associated with utility construction. But again, it all still complies with the Town Center Overlay. And then the other change, another change is consolidating the driveways into one from the original two. And then a few more things. The original project included three subterranean garages. Those are being consolidated into one. As I mentioned, there's some changes to landscape and open space configuration with an overall net increase. And then a CUP amendment that would allow restaurants to be sited anywhere within parcel A rather than being designated into three specific buildings. And then a change to allow breakfast and coffee places to open a little bit earlier. The project will now also tie into the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility instead of having its own onsite wastewater system as a result of the Regional Board prohibition. So just again for clarification, for, this is the table three from the staff report on page 20. There were a couple of errors as far as the project conformance goes. The proposed setback, for example, on parcel A is 38 feet, not 331 feet. And the parking, as a result of the redesign, the original project included a shared parking agreement, so that one one of the parcels accommodated some of the parking required for the other. The new revisions to the project eliminate the need for that. So that's, again, a little bit of clarification on the grading quantities and that the parking is being provided on site for parcel B. Now, I wanted to mention briefly that an addendum, a second addendum to the EIR has been prepared as a result of the proposed project amendments. The purpose of an addendum, as you might remember from the last time when we dealt with the intersection improvements, is to determine whether the project modifications would result in any new significant environmental impacts that were not identified in the 2008 EIR, or whether the previously identified significant impacts would be substantially more severe under the alternatives. In this case, the, as we've discussed, the project doesn't increase any of the square footage. It meets all the original development standards, and all the land uses are the same, so there were no changes to impacts. I'm going to go over some updates to the mitigation monitoring program in a little bit. Right now. The addendum included mitigation monitoring program, MMP, that basically it updated the mitigation measures based on the changes to the project. So the changes in the addendum were pretty minor, but there are a few additional changes that are highlighted here in red that need to be made as well. Basically, this mitigation measure E1 that deals with the geotechnical mitigation is just to update, we don't normally include this level of detail in mitigation measures where it lists out exactly what the reports were that were relied on and everything, but that's how the original EIR was prepared. So we're just updating this here to reflect the most current reports. You could actually eliminate all the reference to the specific reports and just say the geotechnical, project geotechnical engineer's recommendations if you wanted to. Measure E4. And it does that. It changes, the language here is being changed to eliminate the specificity and just refer to the mitigation that's recommended in the geotechnical reports. And then it goes into the detail for each building. So this one continues on to several slides. And then E6, again, just an update based on the current project design. And F3 deals with the water quality section, refers to the most recent water quality mitigation plan. I6, we're recommending that that be eliminated. It doesn't apply anymore based on current building code. And then I9 deals with the aesthetics of the project and calls, well, actually, it's related to energy loading as well. It's calling for light-colored materials and that's, it also allows for high emissivity characteristics to reduce cooling loads, so given the architectural changes to the project, the light-colored materials really isn't applicable, but the point of the condition can still be met with the language here. And then for J11, there was reference to- And then for J11, there was reference to wrought iron fence design to prevent the pedestrian access to the Malibu Noles neighborhood. We're just making it a little more general by saying, or similar, that it will still achieve the goal of the project without us having to, you know, bend the project over whether the fence is wrought iron or a metal picket design or something like that. So in addition to those changes, the applicant has proposed two changes to conditions that were included in the resolution attached to your agenda packet. The first one deals with the proposed change to restaurant operation times. And so as you can see on the bottom here, this would be to add language saying, for any amount of time that a coffee and juice establishment or dining establishment serving breakfast chooses to open before 8:00 AM, then it would close earlier by that same amount of time, earlier than otherwise allowed. So that's something the commission could consider if there are any qualms about the proposed earlier operating hours of 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM for breakfast and juice places. Second condition that's proposed to be modified by the applicant is to add language, let's see, a typo, as part of the evacuation plan. This would require the applicant to get approval from the city to include an emergency access driveway connecting to the Park at Cross Creek project. Right now, there's a pedestrian access. This would be for, for this project to include a vehicular access. And they would just accomplish that before the first certificate of occupancy is issued. So they could work with staff on getting that done. And so we've had several questions mentioned by commissioners about the project, and I'm just going to briefly talk about a few of them, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion and we can address the rest that way. There's been a lot of questions and concerns about liquefaction and active faults in relation to the subterranean garage. The city geotechnical team and the building safety plan check team have both reviewed this project and all of the updated structural and geotechnical reports for the design. There is a response that the city geotechnical staff prepared that we distributed late this afternoon to the commission. It's available for review here, the day as if anybody's interested in seeing that. So essentially, all of the project plans have been updated and approved for the liquefaction conditions on the site based on current codes. There was an addendum to the traffic study that was prepared. And again, since there were no changes to the land use mixer square footage, it, it basically updated the methodology. It didn't identify any new impacts. And then there was a question about sycamore trees that are being required as mitigation due to the ones that are removed from the site as part of this construction. The trees that are proposed as part of the mitigation plan are sized from 24 inch to 60 inch boxes, so there's a range. If you wanted to add particular conditions, you could address that, but I think the concern expressed in the, the question was, is covered by that. There was a question about restaurant area and outdoor dining. The approved project calls for 10,000 square feet of restaurant and, and that, so 10,000 square feet of restaurant was approved. The whole, as you know, we typically deal with service area on restaurants. Service area wasn't discussed in the original project approval at all. So the 10,000 square feet deals with the building floor area. We could add a condition limiting the 10,000 square feet to service area to deal with the inside service area and outside dining area. If you would like to do that, you can discuss. And then finally, staff's recommendation is to consider the addendum, grant the CUP amendment, and approve the CDP amendment along with the applicant's proposed changes and then also staff's changes that I've highlighted. And then this final change, which would update section five, because the city council approved two different resolutions for this project, one certified the EIR and one approved the CDP. So we've adjusted section five to reference both of them and include reference to the updates to the mitigation monitoring program that I just kind of went through as part of our recommendation for your approval. And then the final staff change, and then I'll stop talking and let you talk, is just a clarification to condition number two, which is the project description. Rather than listing out the specific grading quantities, since those get tweaked here and there along the plan check process, I would recommend just mentioning that they have to be consistent with the town center overlay standards and not call out the specific numbers. And that concludes my presentation. Have any to answer any questions? We also have Adam Chase here from Public Works and the applicant.
Thank you. Disclosures?
Yes, I met with Commissioner Hill and I, Commissioner Hill and I met with the applicant, the attorney. We walked the property, got some perspective of what was going on, but not much more than what was in the staff report.
That. And I observed multiple bird species, including the great blue heron in its nesting season. Learned the possibility of a retirement home development nearby, which could make the senior center a potential use of the small city parcel, or there are other ideas too, I suppose. Based on past accounts of groundwater level and general knowledge in the neighborhood, I chatted with the library manager and waterworks personnel about groundwater intrusion in nearby buildings. And I can go into more detail, but a lot of that called into question, the assertion that the groundwater level is seven to 15 feet below the surface. It seems to be that it is much closer to the surface. And I spoke with Julie Tumamaite Stensley, the official head of the Chumash. She asked me to share the message. I don't know if she's here or if there is a representative here. Oh, you're here? Okay, so, well, we had a conversation and we can talk more about that. Are you, are you going to speak? Okay. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Commissioners, if you learned something beyond the staff report, could you disclose that information so it could be commented on at a public hearing? If there was anything beyond the staff report that you learned?
I think I just did that. What are you missing?
Commissioner Yearing said there was not much beyond the staff report. Was there anything in particular that you learned beyond the staff report from your visit? Yeah, did you learn anything that was not in the staff report?
No.
Okay.
I met with Commissioner Marks and the owner and attorney on the site. We did a site review. I didn't learn anything, well, I didn't learn anything that isn't in the staff report if you can find it. And they gave us a fancy colored booklet, which I don't know if all of that's in the staff report or not.
I think that's now in part of the public.
We, we posted it on the website so that it would be part of the overall materials.
So that's all I learned.
Chris?
Yes, disclosed, I visited the site with Commissioner Mazza, met the team. We did a walkthrough of the area. One thing that wasn't, I think, clearly called out is, my understanding is during engineering, they found they had to raise their foundations roughly another 11 inches is my recollection. So I assume we'll talk about that some during the discussion as well, but I did not see it explicitly in the report. I did ask the applicant also if they could just better kind of specify how open space is leveraged. So some of that is, is in grass, some of that is in hardscape. So I asked for some clarification there, which I hope that is closed today. And then we did have some questions back at the back of the property, kind of the grading change from where they're going to have the back structure versus the existing property. So I don't think that was detailed as much on the staff report, which I hope also there's some on. Other than that, nothing additional.
I met with the applicant's team in my office last week for about an hour, but just basically went over the material that is part of the public record. Nothing, nothing new.
One, one more. Speaking with Mr. Gordon, we talked about emergency access on the backside of the property. One of those, Bonnie, you just mentioned that there's an agreement to put in something between that and the park. We also talked about putting in something on the other side, on the library side, and the notion that, and we, if there's any dispute, we can sort of clarify this, but to have it be an emergency access gate that would have some kind of manual override, so even if there was a power outage, you'd still be able to open it.
The, my preference would be to begin the public hearing at this point. Is there anybody that has a question that absolutely has to be asked right now and couldn't be answered once we get to the public hearing? Of course. Yes. Go ahead.
And I'm going to ask, I hope it's all going to be covered in the public hearing. But Bonnie, this is sort of a planning question, and this is one of the things I brought up to Brian when we met with him. He's putting in 112,000 square feet of additional development. I go next door to Whole Foods, they're not even full yet. I go across the street to Melville Colony Shopping Center, there's empty buildings all over the place. I walk across the street to the lumberyard, that's empty, or parts of it are empty. So I guess my question is, when you guys looked at this thing, okay? Well, let me go back. So my concern says, if he can't fill this thing, all right? Or if the current results we've got in these other shopping centers are going to be carried over to what he's doing, we're going to have a lot of empty spaces in Malibu, I mean, in Malibu. And I don't think that's good. I don't think that's good image for the residents. I don't think that's a good image for other people, other commercial properties that may want to move in there. So I'm just wondering, have you guys thought about that? And if in fact it turns out that way, what do we do about it?
Well, the, part of the original negotiation of the development agreement with city council included a market analysis and, you know, consideration of the size of the project and the public benefits and all of that sort of stuff. So it was considered as part of the original project approval. At this point, the size of the project is what it is. I'm not sure what tools we would have to do anything in terms of vacancy. The lumberyard you mentioned is undergoing some, some changes right now to try to improve its ability to lease up space. I believe Whole Foods has got a lot of tenants lined up, but they're making tenant improvements, so some of that's in flux. But that's, I don't know what else you're looking for, or if Trevor wants to add anything.
It could be something that could be dealt with by the city council in legislative context if it becomes an issue in the city.
Just let me add, I mean, and I tried to do some research just looking it up, and there's a number of cities, New York, San Francisco, and the one, Arlington, Mass, where what they put in is a vacancy fee. If your property is left empty for six months, developer has to pay a fee to the city, okay? And now, I don't know how, how, I don't know if there's enough information yet to say it's going to be effective, but you take Arlington, Mass, the story I read, they had 20 vacant buildings at the beginning of the year, they put the vacancy tax in, at the end of the year, they only had seven. So whether that is a result of the vac, I mean, I think you need more information. But I mean, look, I just think there's, if it ends up being a lot of empty space, we ought to start thinking about what it is we could do. I mean, to me, it's a planning issue. It's in, you know, if the city, we want the city council to start thinking about stuff, we may want to get something on the plate. One last question. In the original agreement, there was a listing of benefits that the city got that overrode the, some of the issues. And one of them was a dedicated trail in front of Cross Creek. I mean, is that, is that in Dunn anyplace?
It's part of the, it's being all wrapped together with the parcel C conveyance and the easement for La Paz Lane and, and all of that. So yes, it's in the works.
But we don't, it's not in here anyplace?
It's, I think it's what the project is already proposing to build in the front.
I'm just, I was trying to find it, I couldn't, I mean, if it's there, I couldn't find it. So we, maybe when we get the other guy, we can talk to him. Okay.
I think the hitching rail is still there too.
Excuse me?
I say the hitching rail is still there too as part of the project. Good job.
I just, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions that may speed up the hearing a little bit. From my understanding, I looked at the plans, Bonnie, and it looked like all the elevations were taken from the finished floor. So when you say a 28-foot building, are you talking from natural grade or finished floor?
The town center overlay standards had, they specified a specific way of measuring height, and it's from finished grade.
So they could pile up theoretically 20 feet of dirt and then put the building on top of it?
In theory.
Okay. Okay, I did not know that. The other thing that I noticed is on, on plan G A 2.10, there's additional square footage built in the, in the underground garage. And I don't have scales or anything, but appears to be 5,000 to 10,000 feet, which is not counted in the total of element square footage. Now, is that something I should be concerned about?
Which, which sheet are you referring to?
That's sheet G A 2.10.
Well, subterranean area doesn't count against floor area for the project.
This is, this is actual building. It's not an area, this is rentable space. It even says tenant on it.
It's in the garage?
Yep.
I think it says tenant storage on the application.
It just says tenant.
Well, I mean, floor area does not count. Let me, okay, let me think about that for a minute.
Okay, and then, the last one, the others are kind of detailed, but the last one is this emergency access, number 60 that you mentioned. That's totally predicated upon whether Whole Foods goes along with it? They just have to ask them?
This would be the applicant preparing his site to make that possible.
And then the city has to go to the Whole Foods and say, will you open the gate?
Yeah, I mean, we, the, this applicant won't, doesn't have the ability to make Whole Foods do anything.
Oh, no, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, the city could, to, could try to coordinate that.
So there's, there's just, you're just saying the applicant has to make it possible and then see what happens?
The applicant's offering to make that possible on his site.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Okay, a couple of questions.
On the traffic, you've characterized the addendum as saying that it's really no change in terms of the impact, but in, in the addendum, on, I looked specifically at the Cross Creek-Civic Center Way intersection in that zone. On Saturdays, it, the addendum showed that it generates an additional 414 daily trips as compared to the approved project, and more on, at other times in other seasons. And those numbers are roughly double, almost double, of what's going through there now. Or, I'm sorry, that's nearly double of what was approved in 2008. In addition, on the traffic addendum, we have the ambient growth factor of 1% annual growth to capture the, the general traffic in Malibu, stopping in 2022, which it seems to me that's a number that you'd want to be factoring in on the study for the lifetime of the project. So I, I, there's a couple of things about that, that, the traffic study that, to me, makes the impact seem substantially greater than what was approved, and substantially greater than anything that the council signed off in its statement of overriding concerns, considerations.
Is there a question there? This is, this is question time.
The question is.
My suggestion would be to have the applicant do the, their presentation, and then Adam from Public Works could speak to that as well.
Okay. And then a couple more just for staff on the, John just raised this issue, and we talked about the liquefaction potential. He just mentioned that you're raising in the fill, and it looks in most cases to be about four feet of fill that they're putting in below the finished grade level. I didn't see anywhere that that additional fill was factored into the liquefaction study. Is that, did I just miss that in the thousand pages of reading?
That's been addressed in the geotechnical reports that the city geologist has been reviewing along with the building plan check part of it.
What about the nearly 5,000 cubic yards of additional proposed grading and truck, truck trips in traffic? I didn't see that anywhere.
That was assessed in the air quality impacts.
I'm thinking more about traffic.
Well, I don't have an exact number of the truck trips, but the- Well, I don't have an exact number of the truck trips, but the, that's typically addressed in the construction management plan where there's a plan for haul routes and staging and where, you know, timing of those things.
So we don't know if that, that's an additional potential traffic impact. And then I guess my last one for staff right now would just be, we have heard in general that the water main running under PCH through Malibu is at or near capacity and needs to be re-upped. Here, we do have a, a signed agreement between the applicant and Water Works that water will be supplied, but there's a requirement that certain infrastructure be built out that other parties are going to be sharing costs on, and it didn't specify, and I'm just wondering, who else is on the hook for that revised infrastructure? Do we know they're going to pay? Can, can the infrastructure even get built out within the limits of the existing capacity? Is this, are we, are we promising more water than we can deliver?
The Water District manages that whole side of things, and they require, they require participation from, for example, the Whole Foods project and any of the other new commercial projects, so they're planning all that.
Okay. All right, I guess that's it for the moment. Thank you.
And Cher, I do have a couple of quick ones.
Okay.
Okay. So first question, Bonnie, just for guidance, in the documentation by the applicant, they refer to gallery, should we interpret that as art gallery per the IMC?
I would like to hear from them, but that's what I assume.
Okay. And then second, on your parking slides, if I track the math right, it looked like there was a reduction, you had to split by parcel A versus parcel B. On the, the overall slide in the presentation, it showed an increase of one spot. What's the, the net parking change from this change?
I believe there's no decrease in parking, we just have one, one new parking space.
Okay. I just, I think your slide might have shown a net reduction, if I track right, but it's not, not important. And then the last one, that fence at the perimeter to keep people from just walking into neighboring properties, we'll need to keep that wildlife permeable, or what would be the, how should we treat that fence? Because it doesn't enclose anything, but is your guidance there?
As long as there's somewhere, there are breaks in the fence somewhere for wildlife to go, that can meet the requirement.
So it can be a linear section, just doesn't enclose anything, it's okay?
Yeah, you could, you could have that portion of it be solid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. The applicant team is Mr. Arnone, Ron Radzner, and Brian Gordon. Collectively, you have 15 minutes. You can save as much or all of it as you want for rebuttal, if you wish.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Gordon, CEO of Pacific Equity Properties, and together with our investors, we own the La Paz property. I'm very excited to be with you here this evening to present our enhancements to the project. Following the city's approval of the project in 2008, we acquired the property in 2016. We purchased the property as a fully entitled project, ready to progress to the development stage. Our vision is to create a beautiful place where Malibu residents can hang out, parents can bring their children to come and play, people can meet to workshop and dine in a relaxed setting. To do so, we identified changes to the project's functionality to be more beautiful and to better serve the Malibu residents, but all staying within the parameters of the approved project's development agreement and the town center overlay. These changes include a much better people-focused orientation, improved vehicle flow, improved pedestrian safety, more attractive architecture, enhanced landscaping, and more neighborhood protection measures. Our changes keep the same floor area and density, keep the same mix of uses, keep the same number of parking spaces, keep the same setbacks, enhance the landscaping, and the beauty of the project. Here to share the details is Rod Redzina, co-founder of the renowned firm Marmal Redzina.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you, Bonnie. I think you got the clicker. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm, I'm Ron Redziner, design partner at Marmal Redziner. Our office has enjoyed working in Malibu over the years, and we're happy to be back with this project. I'm excited to present to you the proposed project modifications for the La Paz Ranch project. So our basic design goals for these modifications are to really create a vibrant communal space within the Civic Center area, to orient the project to better access for people to the site and to the, the project itself, and then to design the architecture and landscape to better reflect the, the neighborhood of Malibu and the rural beach character of the So first of all, here's the approved project and project modifications at the pedestrian entrance at Civic Center Way. So the approved project entrance was really oriented to the car, intertwining cars and people at that entry point. We're trying to create an entry experience that's geared towards people walking, biking, riding, or even on, on horseback from around the Civic Center area. On the right, you see the larger walkway from Civic Center Way, surrounded by landscaping and seating areas. And here's a plan of this area. On the left, the approved project, which really cars are circulating in and out of garage entries and exit points across pedestrian walkways near the front of the project, walkways and roadways are near each other. We've tried to redesign this entrance experience to separate the roadway from the pedestrian entry. So we have one vehicular entry at La Paz Lane, and then a, a dedicated pedestrian entry, sort of trying to bring people over from the rest of the Civic Center area with a large pedestrian crosswalk. We've also simplified the parking garage. The approved project had three separate parking garages, and you can see the circulation of the four entrance and exits from those two front garages could get quite complicated. We've reduced that circulation so that we're really just coming in along La Paz Lane and circulating into the large parking structure underneath our project. This really reduces the conflicts with people walking to and from the shops, and basically is just creating, you know, one structure promoting the pedestrian circulation at ground level and safety throughout the site. So with the architecture and the landscape itself, on the left, the approved project with the large vehicle entry adjacent to the pedestrian walkways, it's of Mediterranean-style design, more solid walls than glazing, finished in a, kind of a bright plaster color that contrasts with the landscaping. There's not that much planting throughout the site. We're trying to create something that varies building heights, roof styles, articulation of storefronts, to really break up and add visual variety, and more of a pedestrian scale to the project rather than that car scale. Also, the color palette, we're trying to use something just more natural colors, something that blends in with the surrounding landscape, the mountains that, that provide a backdrop for the center. Here's some renderings of the central plaza. So the approved project restricts access across the plaza with a large water feature, there's grade changes, again, quite a bit of hardscape, not too much landscape or area for children's play. We've simplified the elevation changes, creating much more garden space, and then creating a large children's play area that's centrally located to the shops and to seating, and something we think can really be used by families in the community. Here you see a plan of that area with, on the left, you can see that continuous water feature, and there was also a, a building in the center of that zone originally, which you can see in our plan to the right, we've pushed that building off to the east to give just more open space in that, that central zone. So here, we're looking at the, the office buildings on parcel B. We've, you, you can see the approved project to the left. On the right, we've consolidated the number of buildings from four to three and pulled them closer to the retail project, hoping that people who are in those offices would then just walk over to the retail, less, less need for, for, for the car. The project modifications also should have moved the roadway further away from the residential areas to the north and the east, and the buildings themselves further away from those residences to the north and the east, allowing us to increase the landscape buffer and improve the noise situation for those neighbors. Here's renderings of the previous office structure to the left and the new to the right. We're trying to kind of cluster our office buildings around a landscaped area where people can work, just hang out, socialize, and tuck this into, into the slightly sloping grades that exist there. We've also designed the buildings with a darker palette, something, again, that would blend better with the surrounding landscapes rather than really stick out. And finally, here's the last image of the, of the office structures, this being closest to the residential area, where you can see the, the office is tucking into the hill, the landscape surrounding that, giving a better buffer to those residential areas. So hopefully this gives you a better sense of the general thoughts behind the revised architecture and landscape design, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good evening, Jim Arnone with Latham &amp; Watkins, representing the applicant. The clock isn't working over here, so I can't see what you can see. I think I generally know where we are.
6:38.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Just very briefly, is this a clicker? I'm going to save. How do I advance this? Oh, there you go. Just wanted to have a depiction here of some of the acts, some of the pedestrian and trail uses. You see there, along La Paz Lane down to the bottom of this image, there is a public sidewalk, the walkway that is designed both for skateboards and for walking that the city asked us to put in, and that's a part of what one of the commissioners was asking about. You see up on the top here is the multi-use trail that's designed for non-motorized vehicles walking or for horses. It'll be DG decomposed granite. You see how it was designed overall to allow connections? You see that top arrow there? There's a pedestrian pathway that will interconnect with the Whole Foods development, so you can park at our site, you can walk over there, you can park on their site, you can walk over here. You see the other connections towards Legacy Park, towards the future Santa Monica College campus and the library right next door, and towards the other Civic Center properties. And the idea here is that all of these areas are relatively close, that people who park at one place will be able easily to walk to the others, and so thereby reduce trips, though conservatively, our traffic assessment assumed that every single person coming to our site would actually drive there, when we are hoping and expecting that won't be the case. You also see up at the top, there's that hitching post. Then, let's see, I keep, there we go. So the condition that the director mentioned, you can see right there, you see the orange square, that is a place where on the Whole Foods site, the roadway bends and you could easily connect from our site onto their site. That would allow for emergency evacuation purposes, if there was a need to evacuate our site onto theirs, their site onto ours, if people up further north were coming down Civic Center Way and, and had challenges there, they could, they could come in and have other access points. What we've proposed, and you saw, is that we would finish that so that vehicles can go through, we would put a gate there with one of those Knox locks so that emergency personnel can open that up, and so that could be used that way, and we have, we have volunteered a condition to commit to work with the city and the neighbor to make that a reality. I'm going to reserve the rest of the time. There were many questions that the commissioners asked. I've got a thick binder of technical stuff, if you'll bear with me, I'll flip through it, but I will have to do that in response to questions, given the limited time for the affirmative presentation. So for now, I'll reserve the remainder. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have four minutes. Next, we have Julie Tumamayat Stensley. I butchered that, I'm afraid, but.
Not the first time that's happened. Good evening, Happy New Year, Commissioners, staff, community. My name is Julie Tumamayat Stensley. I am the great-great-granddaughter of the chief of Humalewu Hetchu, here on my father's side. Sorry for my dress, I came straight from work in Carpinteria, where my father's grandmother is village there in Carpinteria. We come from a long line of families here throughout this territory. The project was approved in 2008, so that was prior to the AB 52 that was established in 2015. So we never had a chance to consult on the project. It is approved, I'm not here to debate or try to oppose the project. The project and design is very beautiful, and our, our time was spent in the last, during Woolsey Fire, so I got to see a lot of the areas around here that, in which our tribal members have never had a chance to see. I would like the applicant and the, and the city to, to consider the monitoring of this project. Eight recorded sites within a half mile of the project. Half mile, thousands of years ago, even hundreds of years ago, a couple hundred years ago, is nothing for our people, especially close to waterways. Those eight sites, were they each individual villages, or were they a accumulation of one entire village that spanned over thousands of years? Alluvial soils cover much of our, well, there's a spot here, I won't, I cannot, under confidentiality, reveal the area, but remains have been found in this city seven feet deep. And that's very unusual, as if any of you who know archaeological work. So I'm just asking that the mitigation measures be considered, reconsidered to include archaeological monitoring, to change and put construction workers and grounds crew people, turn them into archaeologists or native monitors, that like myself has more than over 30 years of archaeological background and training, to reconsider that into, into this. I'm not real thrilled about the underground parking, but only because of the liquefaction and just the danger that that can cause if you're not looking at 500-year floods. So with that, I'm glad to be up here, it's been a while since I've seen all of you, and I thank you for this opportunity. And I was really, for four months, grounded here in, in Malibu, and I have to just say something about traffic, it sucks. You know, if that's an issue here for people, I hope they talk. I just had a horrible time trying to make my way around. And native plants, if that can be incorporated into the landscaping, that'd be beautiful. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joseph Soliman. Am I getting this right? S O L E I M A N? No? Not here? Robin Ritter Simon.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robin Ritter Simon, and I'm a full-time Malibu resident, living just 10 minutes south of here and the project in the La Costa Beach neighborhood. I come before you tonight to lend my support for the modifications to the La Paz Ranch project, which you will be voting upon. The elements of the proposed modifications that I prefer as a future visitor to the site include, several of them have already been discussed by the applicant, but I just want to emphasize that one is the garage. I believe one consolidated garage, which allows for more efficient parking in a central location, is a far better plan as opposed to the three garages in the original plan that was approved. The pedestrian entrance, I prefer the dedicated separate entrance from vehicles, located at the center of the property, as opposed to having the same entrance as cars, as I believe this is a safer way for traffic to flow. I really like projects that incorporate open space, leisure areas, as I believe this enhances the visitor's experience. This project will have a central plaza with a children's play area, various lounge seating areas, and an outdoor, an outdoor fire pits. I believe this is perfect for the Malibu community, and this is something and a place that I know my family would like to visit. I support the modifications to parcel A buildings, which will result in reduction in height for the project. As far as the storefronts, the modifications to the storefronts will allow for more pedestrian plazas, seating areas, sidewalks, and pathways. And lastly, as you just heard from the architect, the talented architect, this modified plan embodies a rural village concept which complements the existing environment and certainly complements the. the surrounding area and the new project that you refer to as the Whole Foods project. My family and I love living in this beautiful neighborhood, and we take advantage of the many amenities that are here, and we welcome new amenities so that we can enjoy them as well, such as new dining and shopping options, so that we can stay put in our community and not have to travel to neighboring cities battling the traffic that has been referenced here this evening. I support the modifications to the project, and I hope you will take into consideration my comments and grant these modifications. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you very much. Mary Ellen Sherry.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Sherry. I'm a real estate agent with Sotheby's International Realty here, and my husband Bob and I are 33-year Malibu residents, which is a testament to this awesome city, and it's been a great place to raise a family for all these years. My husband's away on business, but we both strongly endorse this new 21st century La Paz Ranch design. The old design was faux Spanish 1980s style, kind of sad style, in my opinion, trying to evoke old Santa Barbara, and you just can't do that. And that would be disappointing, because Malibu has a cachet all of its own. You know from probably traveling throughout the country and overseas, you know, whenever I mention I'm from Malibu, people know the city instantly, are so interested in it. So we have a very sophisticated brand image to uphold. The new layout is so aesthetically pleasing. It's sleek, sophisticated, as I mentioned, and it combines the more pleasing color tones, wood, stone, glass, all of that. Importantly, the new layout is far more functional and provides better vehicle and very walkable pedestrian access. I love the open floor plan, the indoor-outdoor space, which we are so famous for here in Southern California. And the greatest gift is that the modified plan offers a larger central gathering spot here in the Cross Creek Civic Center Way area. We have that up. I live in western Malibu, and we've really enjoyed the vintage Tranqus Market open floor plan and enjoyed the concerts that they had there in the summer and such. So I really see it as a great spot for, you know, baby playgroups to gather, kids from Webster and OLM, seniors from the senior centers can come over and walk and talk and play and have snacks after school. Tech startups, people in small businesses could meet. You know, I'd love to have a book club meeting there. So anyway, I just would encourage you to please approve the new plan, you know, tonight if possible. The longer this goes, the more expensive it becomes. Malibu rents and services are already expensive, and the delays just add to the cost. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Katrina Venegrad.
The question I have regarding the La Paz Shopping Center is this. Who are we building this shopping center to serve? Is it the population of 13,000 that reside within the city? Or is it the millions of tourists who visit Malibu daily during peak season months? The answer to this question will lead to very different end results regarding the types of businesses that take root. My pet peeve with shopping malls are the amount of empty storefronts. Greedy landlords demanding high rents that only giant corporations can provide result in a generic monoculture that I find hard to believe any Malibu resident supports. We have all personally witnessed time and again, small-scale, popular, local businesses getting pushed out by astronomical rent increases. Why do we need yet another shopping mall when we already have so many empty storefronts in the existing ones? In an ideal world, I would prefer yet another giant mall not to be built. If it must be built, I would like to see spaces offered at affordable rents for local artists and crafters, community members, and the Tumash to share their work and their knowledge, to foster their ideas, and to actually nurture this vibrant and varied community. On another equally important note, I want to also address the destruction of six old sycamore trees on the proposed mall's site and the planting of 60 replacements. I again ask the same question. Who will these sycamore trees serve? It is a well-known fact that trees encased in concrete, in a concrete parking lot mall, do not serve the same purpose as trees rooted into the earth on a wild plot of land. What birds will nest in these trees? What coyotes will den under these trees? What native plants will be encouraged to grow and flourish amongst these concrete-encased root systems? I came to Malibu for her wildness, for her wildness to reconnect me to my wildness. I am worried for her future and for my own. Thank you.
Annie, you gave your time to Paul Grisani. Paul, you have four minutes.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I am currently the Government Affairs Officer for both the Malibu Chamber of Commerce and the Malibu Association of Realtors. Both of these organizations have received a presentation to their boards from the developer of this property, from the applicant, where they were able to examine the previous plans as well as the plans before you tonight. Both of these organizations voted to instruct me to speak on their behalf tonight and have sent letters of support, which you will find within your 777 pages of your package for the project. And I wouldn't blame you if you haven't read every single page looking for it. Last November, I met with the applicant at the subject property and was able to spend an hour with him examining the new plan alongside the plans that were previously approved, and asked questions about all the things I could think about that might make this improper. I and the two organizations I represent tonight are in favor of the changes proposed by the applicant for the following reasons. First of all, safety is enhanced by separating the vehicular traffic and the pedestrian traffic. The maximum height of the property on this, the development on the highest portions is reduced from 32 to 28 feet. The central lake, which was there because they needed a space to store cleansed waters until they could use it, is no longer necessary, and that enabled them to move it a little further apart and put an actual walkable area in between the buildings, so that if you wanted to visit a friend who worked in another building or in another store over there, instead of having to go all the way around, you can go straight across. And there are gathering areas within that space as well. Sorry. In addition, all setbacks are respected by the plan, and we also feel the safety of the underground parking is enhanced by making it one large space that's easy to police rather than the three smaller spaces which have lots of nooks and crannies for miscreants to hang out in. The opinion was also expressed that the new architecture by Marmel Redziner is more attractive and will age better. Please remember that the old project is a vested project, which will get built if you should reject the improvements before you today. Opt for what's better.
Jefferson Wagner, followed by Norm Haney, and that's our last speaker.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jefferson Wagner, 23901 Civic Center Way. I'm probably more familiar with this project than anybody in the room besides Jeff Jennings. I originally was here on the project in 2008 to 2012, and we adopted it then, and then I was appointed by John Seibert between 2014 and 16, somewhere in there, on the Civic Center Project Committee.
Councilmember Wagner, just to caution you, this project, if appealed, would be before you coming up, so I would caution you, any comments that you're going to make on the project itself, since it could be appealed to you.
Certainly, I appreciate that. And the concern I had is not about the project itself, it's about emergency public access. So I don't think that that is a broad enough spectrum to keep me from opining later on if it does come to council. But thank you, I appreciate that, Counselor. The reason I came this evening, and I'll make it brief, is that, and I'm glad the gentleman from Latham &amp; Watkins mentioned that, that the emergency access between parcel A and parcel B from the Whole Foods project still does exist. The gate there is about 12, 13 feet wide. I'd like to remind you that you can memorialize that in your project oversight to make it 18 feet, which is the width of two fire trucks passing. And that should be enough of an access. They also provided further down in parcel A, closer to Civic Center Way, foot access, which is a wise access, just to make sure that it's memorialized wide enough for an ambulance or something like that to get in there in case they don't have to go all the way through the project. So once again, that back gate, which was indicated on the proposed project, widen that to 18 feet and make sure that it can be opened in an emergency, even if the fire department's not there. That's very important for public safety. We got it through the Whole Foods project. You can weave all the way from Sarah Retreat to the end of this project at the far side of parcel B to get to the county property, and we'll deal with the county property later on. There you go, Counselor. It has nothing to do with the depth of the project. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Norm Haney, I was asked to look at this project predominantly because of my experience with regard to commercial development. When I was a very young man, I originally started working for Ernest W. Hahn, who builds shopping centers. The Northridge Fashion Center was designed by them, and also the South Coast Center I worked on, as well as several other. And those projects had both subterranean parking, parking structures, and onsite parking as well. So I'm very familiar with parking, and I'm also very familiar with Malibu's development I think the issue before you is not whether there's going to be a shopping center on this site, but whether the amendments that are being requested create a better shopping center experience, both from a safety point of view as well as a functionality point of view. I told them I would review the project when I was asked, provided if I didn't agree with the modifications, I wouldn't speak towards it. They agreed. Having said that, the project is a much better project. From a functionality point of view, the previous project, as mentioned before, has three subterranean garages and six ramps. This project has one subterranean garage. You can see all the way across. If there's a space that you want, you can see it and you can get there, and it has three ramps, not six. There's no question that it's a better facility. In terms of the storage was mentioned, and as you all know, when you have a major shopping center, you have storage. In my particular building, I have an electrical room, and a lot of people have taken over for storage. So when the electrician comes, they can't get in the room because there's too much storage there. The storage that we're talking about now is in a basement, and when you have storage in a basement, it is not counted as part of the square footage, and it's a good thing, trust me. You're going to have a lot of things put in that storage facility that would otherwise probably have to be thrown out and can't be used again. So I'm in strong support of the project. I think it's a much better project, and that's the issue before you. I also agree that the height goes from 32 to 28. I'm not sure how they got the 32 feet approved. I'm going to talk to them and see what I can do about getting my projects higher than the 28-foot requirement. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this project? I don't see any hands, so we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, what?
Four minutes rebuttal.
Oh, you do have rebuttal time. I'm sorry, Jim. Four minutes.
Thank you very briefly, and happy to answer questions later. As to the point about cultural resources, I just wanted to point out that there are two mitigation measures that address this. Mitigation Measure D-1 and mitigation Measure D-2. It's D-1, in the event archaeological resources are encountered in the course of grading or construction, development must cease, must be assessed, subsequent recommendations determined by a qualified consultant. D-2, in the event that human remains are discovered, there should be no disposition other than in procedures set forth in law, and then they specify what those are and the need to call the county coroner. About the sycamore trees, I did want to mention that the approved project assumed that there would be 60 replacement sycamore trees, I'm sorry, that there would be a total of 127 sycamore trees, of which 60 of them were seedlings, so brand-new seedlings, and 67 of them would be 24-inch box trees. That's what was approved. What we're proposing is much more lush than that. We're proposing more trees, 139 sycamore trees, with a much broader range of size and maturity. Nine of, excuse me, 24-inch boxes. So the smallest size we have are 24-inch boxes. We're having no seedlings. The smallest ones are 24-inch boxes, which for general thinking is about a five-year-old tree, about 10 feet high. We've got a range of 23 that are 36-inch box trees, which are approximately seven-year-old trees and 15 feet high, and then we've got eight of the, four 48-inch box trees that are about 10 years old and 20 feet high, and then four that are 60-inch box trees, multi-trunk, that are older and taller. So we have a lush, broader range, much more so than in the approved project. On the emergency evacuation access, the volunteered condition is to work with the city and the neighbor to make sure that works. Very much appreciate the councilmember's comments. 18 feet is not a problem, so happy to make sure that when working with them, it is at least 18 feet. We had been thinking that it would be something that would be accessible by the fire department, one of those boxes that they have access to. Councilmember raises an interesting point, and we'll work with the city on any kind of access methodology, even if the fire department isn't there, if that's what seems to make sense. The garage storage area, as was commented, is not FAR floor area. There is in our, in a set of our plans, two spaces are mislabeled as office. Those are just storage areas, there's no office space down there. If I could, how much more time do I have? Minute and a half. So can we get this back up?
If there is additional questions, it won't be charged against your time. I mean, if you run out of time and people still ask you questions.
Sure. I just wanted to spit out my part. I suspect you might have a question. So I just wanted to say, there's a question about site surfaces, and it's a little bit confused. So we had this diagram, the architects prepared this diagram, and I'll leave it up after I leave, but this shows the different types of site surfaces. Landscape area can be occupied or non-occupied, and so this shows the different types of things, I think, in a way that makes it a little easier to understand. I don't have the time to go through that now. Some questions we had heard about is about loading zones and trash enclosures, and the diagrams submitted to the city are a little bit unclear on that because they were blended together. This one separates it out, so you see in the blue, those are loading zones for the trucks to be able to deliver. They're all off the roadways, and that's for the trucks to be able to deliver when there's deliveries. The orange that you see are trash enclosures, and then the kind of fuchsia is passenger loading zone. So we just thought that was a little bit clearer than some of the materials we previously presented. That's what I had for responses to the public comments, and of course, we're available to answer questions. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. Now again, is there anybody else who wants to address the commission on the project in front of us? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Commission table for questions, comments, even a motion? Questions and comments? Who would like to go first?
A quick one, first to Mr. Ornone.
A quick one, first to Mr. Rannoni. Those updated slides you have with kind of the graphics showing those overlays, those two last you flashed up, is there hard copy that could be handed out, or were they presented? I think those would be, help my brain, at least, on this one. Whoa. Good catch.
I think we have a few, they were just created today, I could hand up a few that could be passed around, I don't have enough to leave for the public.
If you don't mind, I appreciate it.
We'll make them available to the public if they want to peek on, want to just approach the...
And we can provide them in a PDF, so they can be posted on the website.
Okay.
Steve, why don't you start?
You do a couple now, and maybe come back, because I've got a bunch of stuff here. Let's start, let's do traffic, one of my favorite topics. Couple things. How many trucks are going to go and be involved in this project? How much truck traffic is going to be involved in there, on a daily basis, let's say?
Are you speaking on construction, or upgrading?
I'm talking, what's this running? Fully loaded, all the spaces are filled?
Are you talking about general traffic?
Truck traffic.
Or truck traffic?
Truck traffic.
Truck traffic, I would have to take a look in the report specifically, that's a very specific question.
Say that again?
It's a very specific question, truck traffic, usually it's a percentage, as you take a look.
Let me ask you, let me tell you why I asked the question.
Sure.
What I also did, I asked for a copy of the city's traffic analysis guidelines, right?
The 2012.
Huh?
Yep, the 2012 traffic.
Whatever, whatever, we had the version, the greatest version, and that requires that you do a study of the truck traffic going into this project. And that's nowhere to be seen, anywhere in your traffic analysis.
Maybe I can give you kind of an overview of where, how we got here, and what Public Works specifically takes a look at.
Well, I mean, how we get, your analysis says that's supposed to be in there, that's what your guideline says.
For the trucks.
For the trucks.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant can ask, I mean, you can ask the applicant specifically how they're addressing trucks.
Here's the, it's supposed to be included in the traffic study, the impact of those trucks on the traffic, and it's nowhere in the study, that's my point.
Yeah, so specifically, I mean, maybe I can kind of give you an overview, because I know Commissioner Craig Hill had some questions, too, and it may be it answers your question in a different, different way of where we come from for Public Works. So the traffic study addendum, this is, was a requirement of Public Works, and what do we look for? We look for the net change for the previous approved project. So, this isn't a new project, this is, this is like, taking a look at the addendum, because it was supported, there's traffic data that was supported by the EIR.
Okay.
And so what we're taking a look at is the revised project to identify change and significant impacts, that's what we're looking for. Change in significant impacts compared to the 2008 EIR.
That's what I'm looking for, too. I'm looking for exactly the same thing.
So what do we look for? We look for changed environmental conditions, updated traffic counts, which the applicant provided, updated list of related projects, evaluation of current intersection configurations and controls. In addition, as you have the updated traffic impact guidelines, compared to what was approved before for the 2008, 2012, so there's a four-year gap. And so now what we take a look at is current practices and standards that are currently all the way up to when we took a look at this back in 2018, 2019.
And I appreciate what you're, but you're sort of taking me on a random walk through the universe here.
I know, but it's kind of a good overview to kind of, I think, help the understanding process for it.
Here's the question, here's the question. Will there be significant truck traffic visiting this project over its lifetime?
As opposed to the project that's already been permitted, the new project, or just in general? Because the issue before us is which of these two projects we want.
And the issue before us is to take a look at the studies that they gave us to help us make that decision, right? That's why I got a traffic analysis.
That's why I asked the question.
And my question with the traffic, the traffic analysis guidelines say we're supposed to be taking a look at truck traffic, and when I go through the traffic study, there's not a mention of a truck traffic. I'm just, so I'm just wondering, should it have been in there? I mean, that's part of your guidelines.
Well, the square footage change from office and specialty retail to the shopping center, the land use code, wouldn't dictate and say that there would be an increase in trucks that was studied back in the 2008?
There were no trucks.
So there's the net change.
Okay, then tell me how many trucks were studied back in 2008?
That part of the project was approved, that is what...
Yeah, I think the issue is that the land use mix and all of that, none of that changed, and so there wasn't an incremental difference to study. I don't know if the applicants want to address what that would be, but there's...
My point is, the city guidelines say we're supposed to look at truck traffic, we didn't do that. So I'm just, that's just...
Well, and keep in mind that those are the guidelines that would apply to like a brand-new project, too, and this is not a brand-new project, so it's a little bit...
In the traffic study, it says, it specifically says, they followed the city of Malibu's traffic analysis guidelines. That's why I asked for them.
Right, and their guidelines, and then Public Works will tweak the guidelines, or what the requirements are based on the circumstances.
Doesn't say, that doesn't, okay, that's different. Guidelines say nothing about that when you read the guidelines, about tweaking it, says this is what's required. Let me do another one, okay? If you take a look at the ambient growth rate, all right, you come up with a 1% ambient growth rate, and I don't think this point is going to make a whole bunch of difference, but I think it just sort of demonstrates the quality of these traffic studies. If you go back and look at the 2008 version, what they used for the ambient growth rate then was a Caltrans calculation, and because Caltrans updates its traffic information every year. If you look at what you used for this project, you used the congestion management plan that was developed in 2010, and it reduces the ambient growth rate from what you would have got if you used the Caltrans number. Now, again, I don't think it makes a whole bunch of difference, but you're getting, you know, it's sort of apples and oranges, you're updating something over here with different information over here, just gives you, that's, so I've got, I've got some, and one other thing, nowhere in the base, you know, they usually do additional projects, you take a look at additional projects that are under works. Nothing in here talks about the Civic Center Way improvement, that wasn't included anywhere in the study.
So my understanding, working with planning, our limitation for, I think Craig Hill discussed this, of...
Speak louder if you would, I'm...
Sure. The discussion was, why was the traffic, why was the traffic amendment specifically only through 2022?
No, that's not my question, my question is...
And it's with the ambient growth, and so, taking a look, and we have, our staff has taken a look at the ambient growth, without having any other specific studies that dictate that it's over a 1% annual growth, we leveraged on the higher side of utilizing 1% as opposed to 0.4...
1%, 1.5%, doesn't make a whole bunch of difference, don't worry about the ambient growth. Why wasn't the Civic Center Improvement Project included in your study?
Again, this is a, and help me, Bonnie, if you want to chime in here, this is an amendment, it's not an original project, so, you know, if this was an original project, everything would open up, and we'd have to take a look at everything you've been discussing within the traffic impact analysis guidelines, but specifically, we are looking for net change from the 2008 approved project, and what has changed, and if you look at the footprint, the square footage, the land use, nothing's changed. And so that's kind of why I was trying to give you an overview before on where we are in Public Works, and how we reviewed this project.
Well, in addition to that, I've mentioned earlier that in terms of ensuring that there's not an issue when construction of the project happens in relation to any other project that's happening in the city, a construction management plan would address that, and that's a condition you could include.
Well, I guess from my perspective, just what we've heard, I mean, the issue of trucks not being included, not including Civic Center Improvement Project in the study, I mean, seems to me those things were supposed to be there and are not, and I don't know what the impact is, because I don't know...
Well, let me ask you a question, where you're going with this? Is this lead you to take the view that the environmental impact update is inadequate, and therefore the project must be denied? Where are you going?
I'm not sure where I'm going yet, but I mean, I'm not opposed to the project update, right? But, I want to make sure that, traffic is a big issue in Malibu. Now, I mean, you and I have had our discussions whether traffic goes up or down, and, and...
Yeah.
Yes, we have, okay? And I believe that what we're going to do, we just got to make sure that we know what the traffic impacts are, and if there are any mitigation measures that we can put in place, we ought to think about those. And my point right now is this traffic study doesn't reflect the traffic impact that it should.
And I've never seen a traffic study that does satisfy you, but...
Well, Jeff, one that says that, you know, traffic in Malibu hasn't increased in twenty-five years sure is not going to satisfy me.
Yeah, I know, I got defeated by the road warriors.
I think we've talked about that, yes.
Commissioner Hill, you have comments?
Well, yeah, I just... Can I just ask one clarification from the hearing? Is there any, any condition you'd want to add that you think could help? I guess it'd be another way to put this, like, from your experience.
I think I want to, I've got a number of additions that I'm thinking about coming up with at the end, but let me hear what everybody else has got, and so I can do them all at once, as opposed to trying to piece me apart.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I'll just, quick general comments, I have a similar situation where I'm accruing a list of potential issues for further study, and a list of potential conditions, depending on where we head. On the traffic specifically, first broad comment, I think a lot of the design plans are an improvement over the approved project. A lot of it looks great, there's a lot of good in it, I don't want to, you know, just sound like a curmudgeon here, but I do have some issues. And the traffic is, seems particularly difficult for me, because where we have on Saturday trips at that corner, at Cross Creek and Civic Center Way, the addendum says we're adding four hundred and fourteen additional trips to what was five hundred and thirty in the 2008. So that's not double, but it's getting up there, that's a significant impact. And I know I'm not going to get anywhere with this with Trevor or Bonnie, but I just wanted to point out that this project is being called an enhancement to the approved project, but when one imagines what one could put on that mixed-use commercial lot, and given the factors that you would maximize to get your profit, and how you build it out, this is about as different from the approved project as one can imagine. The buildings are not in the same place, the traffic is in different orientations, there are so many differences that, and on the other side of the coin, I see that what the city bargained for in 2008 is no longer the same. The part of the statement of overriding conditions was that you'd be getting a city hall out of it, and that was going to be a great thing, and you'd be getting a walkway along the front here, and you don't need the city hall now, and the walkway's already there. So it just seems to me that what we're talking about is a brand-new project that doesn't have an applicable statement of overriding considerations. That's all background, I realize there's a lot of friction to head anywhere that direction. But on the traffic thing, that does seem really significant, that we're, we're not counting of the almost double cars coming through there, that's in the addendum, we're saying that's not significant, and the council didn't weigh in on that, that wasn't part of their calculus, and nor this, the ambient growth factor, is, maybe this is a question, but isn't that something that extends through the life of the project? The assumption is that Malibu's going to grow, and we're going to grow at the rate of 1% a year, right?
Yes, if this was an original new project, and we're not comparing to the 2008 approved project, then, yeah, we would make our, we would make a horizon year of, say, 2035...
Or fifty, or something, but why is it 2022?
But at the same time, that's going to be the full-out, build-out year when it's operational. When you take a look at the traffic analysis, you're going to see that significant impact to delay in seconds or level of service in year 2022. You're going to see it there, and so therefore, you'll still see it in the horizon year, if you have it, except in the horizon year, you're going to see potentially other mitigation measures that you may want to incorporate over a phased approach, so...
But we don't have a factor for 1% increased mitigation per year either, it's a growth factor, and I think that that's just not, hasn't been accounted for here. Let me leave that hanging, it's just out there, and we can react to it. It's hard to be as organized as usual when you're looking at so many pages, but...
While you're looking for that, let me just comment...
Want to keep talking about traffic, I think maybe...
This is about traffic, because the requirement for mitigation is to mitigate the effects caused by the project itself, not the projects that are created by, by the growth in general or anything else, it's just mitigating the effects that are caused by this project.
And previously, they decided that the traffic was an unmitigable impact, that they thereby, the council, had to make the statement of overriding considerations. That unmitigable impact is now nearly double what they agreed on then, so if I had been on the council then, I'd be sort of bummed that what I bargained for is maybe not enough now.
So maybe I can clarify a little bit, and just kind of stepping back, traffic analysis, when we take a look at the 2008 approved project, we have different land use categories for the ITE trip generation manual, and this is where I think a little bit of the confusion on what is a significant impact associated with the study intersections. And so when you take a look at the specialty retail that was defined within the report, it's based on the sixth edition of ITE. Currently, right now, we had the applicant update to the current 10th edition, and that's defined as a shopping center land use. So these additions continue to refine the number of studies that transportation engineers publish and approve, and go through this document process, and it's a refinement, it's not the daily trip rates and the AM, PM, weekend trip rates are very, it varies based on the methodology. And so we have to compare apples to apples, and so that's, hence why we had the applicant do current traffic counts, upgrade to the current 10th edition, and then let's see what we have for a significant impact, and if that significant impact currently existed within the 2008 approved project, then, okay, then that's, it's pretty much, that's what you're seeing, is the significant impact on the weekend, which is specifically for Cross Creek Road, Civic Center Way, and that was already identified. So that significant impact was already identified back in the 2008 approved project, with the revised analysis that is currently also identified as a significant impact.
Well, I, okay, apples to apples, it identified five hundred and thirty on Saturday at that intersection, and is now saying that it's adding an additional four hundred and fourteen on top of that. That's, I can tell you, it's on page thirty-six of the addendum, 348 of the PDF, for those of you at home. That just seems like we're beyond what the council would have wanted to approve there. So, I know we're not going to hang up the whole project on this one thing, but I think what it does suggest to me is that, A, if we have enough questions, we may have items for further review that might go into a continuance or other route, and/or B, that there are a number of conditions that we might be hanging on this to get it through tonight.
Can I ask a quick question that kind of plays into this? You'd mentioned the models you have, like, for retailer, other use, there's reference to the use of gallery, is that modeled as well? You know, because in terms of just change from where we were to what's proposed, does that build to the impact? And then, can we get a clarification from the applicant, is that art gallery in the same definition as the city has defined? Because that might help.
I don't have the art gallery-specific information in front of me, but I do have, if you have a question specifically about shopping center and restaurant use, I could answer that.
Can I move on to a question you want to ask?
Yeah, if you don't mind coming forward, Mr. Rannoni, just to clarify if that, if your definition of gallery lines up with the city, just so we can have a common language.
Yeah, so gallery is just another retail space, it would be the sale of art, we do mean art galleries. Art galleries are specifically allowed in the TCO with a conditional use, we are not asking for a conditional use right now, because we don't have an art gallery... We are not asking for a conditional use right now because we don't have an art gallery tenant. If we were to get an art gallery tenant, we would come back and we would ask for a conditional use, but for traffic purposes, it's just a retail use. I could also address some of what has been discussed of traffic, if you would like me to.
Briefly, sure.
So, the first thing I wanted to point out is, the city asked for this updated analysis as an informational item. I want to be very clear, nothing we're proposing, nothing before you tonight that we're proposing has any change to traffic. It's the same uses, it's the same size. If the project was built exactly as approved, it would be no different than the proposed modifications. The nomenclature gets a little confusing in some of the attachments, but what we were asked to do is the 2008 EIR used a traffic study from 2005, and we were asked to update that and to apply the new Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual and the new software for predicting uses. And so it is merely informational. This proposal changes nothing about traffic, whether it was good or bad before, all this is doing is updating that. It's changing the roadways, it's taking to, into account projects that were already built, and then the related projects is a new related projects list that the city provided us. That's the standard way it would be done. So it's merely an update for information, but nothing we're doing alters the traffic from the approved project at all.
Can I just quote?
What are we supposed to do with that information?
Yeah, let me just quote what, what the report says. It says, "When compared to the 2008 approved project, the 2019 project modifications is forecast to generate..." dot, 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 "414 additional Saturday daily trips as compared to the 2008 approved project."
That's what, that's what, that's what I meant, Commissioner.
Over four, over 530, so.
I, I apologize for interrupting. That's what I meant by the nomenclature is confusing, that's why I wanted to be clear here. Because we're so used to talking about new projects in SEQA analyses, the language talks that way. But this proposal changes nothing. It is the same square footage and the same uses, so it changes nothing. The nomenclature, when it talks about the proposed project, it's not really the proposed project impacts. What they mean is, the new analysis shows these differences compared to the approved analysis, and it's informational. And I could, I could summarize it just very quickly. At Malibu Canyon Road and PCH, the previous study said it would be a significant impact. The update said it would be less than significant, but in any event, excuse me, said it would be less than significant, and there was no identifiable mitigation. At Webway and PCH, it said less than significant with mitigation, the mitigation has been done before, and then it was confirmed. Cross Creek and PCH, it originally said less than significant with mitigation, the mitigation has already been done. The update has the same conclusion. The numbers differ, but the update has the same conclusion. Webway Civic Center, it said before, less than significant with mitigation, the mitigation's been done. The update said it didn't need the mitigation because it's less than significant anyway, but notwithstanding that, the mitigation has been done. The one, the one place we have a significant impact, where it was, that the council had to override, was at Cross Creek and Civic Center Way.
That's what I'm talking about.
Where they said it was significant, and there was no feasible mitigation, and then the update says the same thing, that there is no mitigation. I was trying to follow.
Right, it's doubly unmitigable now.
So I was trying to follow, I'm not seeing that, Commissioner, we were trying to find that. I did look at the worst-case scenarios, because I thought that might be what, what you were looking at. And I'm seeing that the different intersections at what's described as the existing trips, which doesn't include the Whole Foods project yet because those counts were taken in 2018. But the existing trips compared to the project trips at summertime had a two-point, at Cross Creek and PCH, depending on the time of day, it ranged from a 2.2% increase to a high of a 3.5% increase. At Webway and PCH.
Okay, we, we, we're focusing on that one intersection, we don't need the whole thing.
So at that one, the highest one, so the weekday afternoon peak hour, comparing the previous analysis to the new analysis, is an increase of 24.5% of the trips. Not saying that's nothing, but I'm not finding a doubling either.
Well, I'm looking at the weekend numbers. Let's, let's leave this for now, and we can agree to disagree for the moment, and look at the bigger picture. I, I have a question about the flow on site, and I raised this on the site visit. It seemed, when you're narrowing your egress to one, one spot as opposed to two, that creates a potential bottleneck, and there are a couple issues about that that I see. One of them is, on Civic Center Way, you have that, the turn lane in the middle of the, the road there. When you have that one driveway there, you're going to have people coming from the west wanting to turn into the center, they're going to come into that middle lane to wait to turn in for the traffic coming from the east, and then the traffic coming out of the center that wants to go east will be vying for that center lane with the traffic that's waiting there already. So you're going to have, you're going to have a bottleneck right there at the intersection of the driveway and Civic Center Way, and, and truck cars coming in and out of the driveway trying to use that center lane at the same time in the same space.
So I understood the concern, and I appreciate that it was raised so that we could look into it a little bit. The, the peak trip flows are never high enough to create bottlenecking. The treat, the peak flows vary, morning about one and a half trips per minute, afternoon about two trips, excuse me.
We're talking about the driveway ingress alone?
Yeah, so there's, so morning peak, one and a half inbound per minute, one outbound every two minutes. The PM peak, two inbound per minute, three outbound per minute.
What about, I think the, the real concern would be, you know, Saturday midday, summer.
Saturday, Saturday midday peak, three inbound trips per minute, 2.5 outbound per minute. And so they're very spaced apart to be able to make those turns. There's not a bottlenecking.
That sounded like a bottleneck to me just now.
That's, well, that's.
Because there's, there's other traffic on that road too, that, that people are going to be waiting for, for the traffic to clear, and then you're getting two or three cars per minute approaching the intersection while they're still waiting, I don't know.
So, so the transportation engineer concludes that you're much better off having them come from one point of egress and egress than having to vibe with each other coming from two that are very close. You would almost never organize something, because remember that La Paz Lane was always going to be ingress and egress. The question is whether you're going to have two immediately close to each other.
That's a good point.
And, and the flow that we have allows it to be much more simplified, and we also took pains as part of this to make sure that they'll never be queuing back up on the street. So where you get in to where the traffic, as you go up La Paz Lane, there's no parking right there immediately next to it, so that if, you can get many, many cars before anything would ever begin to back up.
Could, could you have a, maybe we could put a condition that would require a right turn only coming out of there?
So you, I, I would hesitate, because I know that the traffic studies always assume you can go both ways, and it's like squeezing a balloon. You tell people all to go one way, and then you create an issue some other place. This study showed that no matter what, we're going to have the significant impact at Civic Center and Cross Creek.
Yeah.
And no other place where we have a significant impact.
So that, that right turn only coming out of there actually might help with that too, because we'd be sending people away from that intersection.
So there wasn't an, well, no, they determined that there was no, no mitigation measure that could address it, but like, if you imagine.
We just figured one out.
But if you imagine, if you're, if you're going the other direction, then what you end up doing, if you, if you turn right only, you turn right, then you go into PCH, and then you turn left, and you're not, you're still, you're just affecting other vehicles, other intersections.
Moving to a different question, I, I wondered why the two ramps for the big garage, why one of them you have to come, I forget which is, okay, the entrance is the first one, and then the exit is all the way around the backside. Why would you not, I don't know if it's, I can't.
I understand.
If I could, why would you not, if this is, if this is the, the site, the, the, why would you not have the, the entrance closest to the southwest corner of the, the complex and have the exit at the northwest? Why are we having cars come all the way around the backside of the building?
So the goal is to disperse traffic on the site so that you don't have interactions with each other. So you start with the going into the underground parking structure. You drive up La Paz Lane, you go quite a bit up before you drive down the ramp. That allows a lot of space to avoid any queuing if you had too many cars.
So it's a queuing issue, I think, is what you're, yeah.
So it allows a lot. Then you don't want the egress to be too close to that, because you want them to be able to disperse on the site. So you're going up La Paz Lane, and you go down.
Okay, I get it.
You go out this top, and then you go the other way, and then you end up not interacting with each other, you're just going opposite ways on the same street.
I get it. Okay, maybe somebody else?
John?
Thank you, thank you.
While we're on, on, on traffic, is there a schedule for truck deliveries on this shopping center? We have it, we've put it on every other center we've had. Can you deliver with a big truck anytime, time of day or night?
So I don't believe there are restrictions. I could be mistaken, but I don't recall any, so I don't believe that there were any.
Okay, and.
Yeah, I just took a quick look at that too, and I didn't see any either.
Okay, that's something we got to deal with.
Yeah, there's one that says that they can't deliver, you can't do a garbage pickup or recycling pickup between 10:00 AM and 8:00 AM in the morning. Already in there.
That's just garbage.
For garbage.
10:00 PM.
Excuse me? Between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
For trash pickup.
Okay, that's just for garbage, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's, some of these, some of these restaurants probably do need some restriction. Now, your, your hitching post in your DG Trail leads up to a corner of the property where if you get, get off your horse, there's nowhere to go, right?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you picked the worst place in the property to hitch your horse?
That's where the hitching post was in the approved project, and we didn't relocate it.
So are there any other hitching posts?
There, there aren't. There wasn't any particular thought that it stayed there.
You could tie your horse to a rail.
Well, they have an iron fence there, right?
I think there's always, I think there's always been a hope that at some point the city might be able to make it continue to other places, and so we're doing our component for a future wider trail, but of course, we can't control that.
But you have no intention of having somebody, there's a lot of horses that serve a retreat. You don't want any of them to come over and buy anything.
Pardon me?
You don't want them to ride their horse over and have lunch.
Don't see why not.
Well, they got to hike about.
They, I mean, they'd, they'd have to come across on the street.
Okay.
I used to ride my horses in the city on the street.
Yeah, he braver than Flash Gordon if you do it down there.
Up, up Decker Canyon.
Now, there was, and I asked you this question, I forgot to disclose it, there was a feature on La Paz Lane, which is city, for fire apparatus. Did you ever figure out what the fire apparatus was?
Yeah, that is a fire truck, where fire trucks could park. I was confused by that when the question was first asked, and that just means that's where fire trucks can park, correct? Yes.
Can't they park anywhere?
Yes. I don't know why it was, but that's the answer though.
Bonnie, is there any requirement that we have of fire truck parking spots? I mean, these, the only reason I caught it is it looked like a building and it was on city property.
There's not a standard in the zoning code that requires it, the, you mean just to park it, not, not for responding to an emergency?
Well, apparently that's what all these blue circles are. I mean, if you look on AO.22 and the whole plan, there's a bunch of blue squares, and there seem to be in kind of strange.
So I'm being, I'm getting a little clarification. Of course they can park anywhere, but this is to show that there are some specific areas where if they park there, they have close access to the buildings.
Okay, so you're not going to put in super heavy concrete, it's just a place.
It's, it's.
A place and space.
It's a place where you know a fire truck can park and be close to the buildings.
Okay, now, you're asking for 1 o'clock closure on everything, other than if they, if they serve breakfast, and I don't know why anybody who's serving coffee wants to be open at 1:00, but is there a reason, what?
I'm sorry, I thought that the, that the limitation you explained was that if they opened early, they had to close early, that they.
Right, I'm just saying, some, some of the coffee shops theoretically could close at 11:00. Well, I don't think they'd be, they'd be crazy to be open at 6:00 probably, but is there a reason why 1:00? 1:00 doesn't seem to be standard in Malibu. If you've driven around Malibu after 9:30, pretty much unless you're going to Nobu or something, you're talking jack-in-the-box.
Mr. Maza, if you look at what we did for Whole Foods over at the Morries, they close at 11:00. 11:00 is their closing time.
Okay, and I'm asking, we have a whole neighborhood up above you, and Malibu isn't a 1:00 place, so I'm wondering why you're asking for 1:00? Does it have anything to do with who's, who the uses are going to be?
No, we don't yet have the tenants, so we don't yet know what the uses are. The approved project has always said 1:00 on those days, midnight on the other days. That's what the approved project said. And so we wanted to keep the same flexibility that we have a right to. The change that we're asking for is the earlier hour, and so we assume that some of these will be a coffee place or will want to serve breakfast, and 8:00 in the morning is a little too late. So the change we're asking is to make it earlier.
Okay.
And so, given a concern that maybe that asks for a lot, we're saying, we don't even know that anybody will want to open earlier, but if they do, then they couldn't stay late, was what we thought would be fair. In our looking at it, I know that the Cafe Havana is open till 1:00, I, they've closed, but the Burger Fie Space was approved for 1:00, and so if it gets a replacement restaurant, it's open for 1:00, and the Nobu is open till 1:00. So those are the ones that I was aware of, Commissioner.
Okay, so in the whole Civic Center area though, the only one that's left is the Cafe Havana.
Yeah, well, I assume that somebody will, well, the Civic Center areas are therefore not Nobu, yes, except the Burger Fie Space, I assume at some point we'll have another tenant.
Now, when I look at this map here, what, what is your intention on, we have this amorphous definition that the city council did in 2008 that said, you get 10,000 square feet of And we're assuming that's square feet. I'm assuming it's square feet, but it's never defined anywhere. What is your idea of what it's defined?
You mean you're assuming that it's service area?
No, square footage.
Well, it says 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, but that, without saying service area, that's square feet, that's.
I think I understand the Commissioner's question, so.
Better off than I was.
So the approved project talked about 10,000 square feet of restaurant, and after the question was raised, we looked into it, and that clearly is just referring to the floor area within the structure itself. There was no restrictions in the approved project on outdoor dining at all. So you could have the outdoor dining, it just wasn't, it was only, the 2008 approvals were only focused on the floor area within the building. What we, I'm sorry.
Well, the question is then, are you assuming that, that that would allow more service area?
So, yes, so what we're assuming is there would therefore also be outdoor dining, and so what we were discussing with staff today because of this concern is an additional restriction that we, that we could accept that would say that the, apart from the 10,000 square feet of floor area for restaurant, which includes everything under roof, and therefore would include things that don't, don't generate parking or traffic, like the rest, like the kitchen, that's for floor area definition. In addition to that, and separately, we could have a limitation of 10,000 square feet of service area.
On top of, or in addition?
In, in addition, so it's kind of an apples and oranges thing.
So you're going over 10,000?
So if you took, it depends, it's an apples and oranges thing. So floor area doesn't count anything that's unenclosed, so it doesn't count any outdoor dining ever in floor area, but it would encount, encount everything that's enclosed under roof for something like the toilets or the kitchen. Service area, which is how the city generally looks at things like parking for restaurants, they don't count, they don't look at the kitchen, they look at where you sit, where patrons sit, and they would count it whether it's inside or outside. So it's a totally separate question from floor area. We don't have any limitation now in the approved project on, on that, but we could be fine with a 10,000 square foot limitation on that so that the parking never exceeds what was always assumed.
But you're now telling me that you think you have 10,000 square feet of floor area and 10,000 square feet of service?
No, no, I'm sorry, I meant total.
You're, you're going to count.
So let, let me do some.
That's what I'm trying to define.
So let, let me. So let, let me use some example. Let's say there's 10,000 square feet of floor area. Let's say 40% of that is kitchen, things like that. So that leaves 6,000 square feet of service area under the roof. Then you have non-floor area outdoor dining space. Doesn't count for floor area, but we can take the limitation on it for service area. So you never have more than 10,000 square feet of service area.
Okay.
And that, that cap would be what?
Inside and outside.
Inside or out.
And I don't see anywhere in here that it says you have those rights. It's, it says you have 10,000 square feet of floor area.
It says 10,000 square feet of floor area and the, that has no limitations on the outdoor dining.
Yeah, it doesn't have any entitlements either.
Yeah, that's, that's not a good, that.
Now, see, here's the reason I'm asking it. No, let me, let me finish this.
Just, just let, let John finish his question.
I read in part of this, somewhere in these bazillion pages, you talk about, uh, takeout windows, okay? And we don't, at least I don't, and I never perceived this as being a food court, okay? You walk into the West Side Pavilion or whatever it's called and, yeah, they got a whole bunch of takeout windows and a whole bunch of tables. Now, if you count, if you say, oh, you can have all the service area you want, but in these tiny little 400 square foot takeout windows, all of a sudden, you've got a food court. And I don't, I went to all those areas in 2008 and I was on the planning commission. And I never heard any of that brought up and I don't see it written in here. So that's my concern.
Understood. It talks, the 2008 approval talks about floor area only and it didn't talk about the outdoor dining. I would respectfully say that's not the case. The absence of the restriction when restaurant uses were always assumed at that time too, to include some outdoor dining. I think it was just not restricted. And in, in all events though, I would think that the restriction that we're offering up would address this concern.
John, look, Chris.
Yeah, I, the, the, I just wanna call out the math. So the problem we're having is that our current code for everything but La Paz states one space for 50 feet of service area. And that's ambiguous. Then you look at La Paz code, one space for 200 square feet of retail restaurant shopping center. Okay, so what are we defining that as? Your proposal is to say, I'm gonna call, in this case, restaurant, service area, so that if somebody chooses to operate, say, a 2,000 square foot restaurant, they rent from you 2,000 square feet. They then would say 500 of that square feet, whatever, that's two, I don't know, restaurants. Then they would allocate that to cooking and they push 500 square feet out in the front. That's what you're proposing. So net, they'd have 2,000 square feet to serve. Okay, then, I mean, the biggest concern that's come up in the past is then when we get to the next negotiation, let's say we sign up on this together, then your operator's gonna come in and say, hey, you know, guys, I can't really serve that because I've got ADA lines here. I've gotta put my tables there. I'm gonna reduce that number further. And all of a sudden now, our, our parking numbers just got skewed even worse. So I think what, what my thought is in terms of kind of where you are and the fact that, you know, you have to have some service area inside, some prep area inside, I, I think it's not a bad place to start, that it would be gross service area. None of these reductions for space to walk or whatever, and then we use that one to 200 square feet of service area. That seems like it could be fair for an interpretation of this and we don't have ambiguity.
I, I wanna comment on that. We do have a specific example of this and that is Whole Foods, which is our last shopping center that was built. When we gave entitlements for, for restaurants, we said X number of restaurants, X number of square feet, X number of outside service area. Defined on the map which, which building, where the service area was, et cetera. In this case, we said you had 10,000 square feet of floor space. So it's not like it wasn't covered, it was covered in La Paz. And, and, and my solution would be more like, uh, noble, no table service outside. You can, you can serve and people can go out and eat there, like they do at, uh, at, uh.
Lilly's does that.
No, the Country Mart.
So we would be very uncomfortable with that because we think people like the outdoor dining experience and it'll make it more attractive.
I'd be very uncomfortable with 20,000 square feet unrestricted dining.
So it'll never, I must have misspoke because there's no chance with what I'm suggesting that could happen. You couldn't, you could never have more than 10,000 square feet of service area indoor or outdoor with my suggestion. Of course, a restaurant's going to be mostly indoors, so some small part of that would be your outdoor dining component. You'd have a restaurant with some outdoor tables.
So would you have that, would you have that defined? Would you draw a little square and say, this restaurant gets this little square?
So it would be when we would. Chris's, Chris's solution could be memorialized and seems like it would work.
Right, and, and that's what I wanna clarify. When you say service area, that's got 20 different interpretations and we all kind of freak out. So draw a box and that box, which is the, the perimeter of the service area, that is the service area, inside or outside. Don't have carve-outs for where people walk or whatever.
Yeah, well, well, I, I, that's how I understand it. And what, when you have a tenant, of course, we don't have the tenants, but when you have the tenant and you go for your tenant improvements, there'd have to be a plan check and they would have to make sure we're consistent with the rule. And they would have to add up the total and make sure inside and outside combined never exceeds 10,000 square feet.
I think what you're really kind of getting at here is that the, the area is going to be 10,000 square feet and then we're gonna carve off everything that's not service area. We're gonna carve off kitchens, we're gonna carve off restrooms, we're gonna do all that stuff.
And allow it to come out front.
Well, let me, I just wanna point out, and, and, you know, I'm not greasy chicken guy, but yesterday I went to Chick-fil-A. They have zero inside service, okay? So they can say, here's my restaurant, I got 10,000 square feet to pump people into.
And we're saying that would be okay, as long as they don't restrict.
And I'm not saying that would be okay.
Well, that's what the proposal is.
Yeah.
And what operator could have, you know, they could rent 1,000 square feet all preparation and they'd have the right to put 1,000 square feet to serve out front.
Maybe you could just have a condition that says that the outdoor portion cannot exceed X percentage of the total or, or over the indoor portion or some, some proportion of figure.
Yeah, yeah.
Just remember, what we're doing is taking a process that says because the original agreement didn't say this, we're not gonna assume that we give it to them.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if, if you're gonna do it there, where else are you gonna do it? It just becomes tricky. That's a slippery slope if you wanna go down that path.
And, and, and we did it before. Chris, we did it, we did it on Whole Foods.
Okay, so.
That's just one of my concerns, I just wanted to clear that on.
Let's, let's talk about other concerns now. I think we've kind of beaten that one a little bit. Is, are there other concerns that make you, that you feel that, that where the, the new project or the new proposed project creates problems that didn't exist under the old project?
Yes, okay, one of them.
Okay, I'm, I was nodding at Commissioner Hill, let me.
Okay, go ahead.
I have this list of what I thought might be issues for further study and it's quickly getting whittled down. You'll appreciate hearing, but one that's still on it is, uh, on the hydrology. This has been char, this garage has been characterized as a bathtub, gigantic bathtub floating in the local moist soils. And so I wonder, I've had all sorts of reassurances that that will be sufficiently engineered, but I wonder how that would affect the local hydrology? If, for example, we have now this big island in the midst of the water flow that is gonna be generally coming in rainy seasons and, and otherwise from where we are roughly now towards the creek. And you're putting this big island in the midst of that. Is that in any way gonna cause a backup that would, for example, flood the library basement more than it's flooded already? Because that water that's heading that way has nowhere else to go and it's, it's gonna hit the parking garage and start to back up against the, the library. Have we studied the hydrology enough to know that this isn't gonna impact the, the neighborhood flow?
I mean, we've been talking with our experts about that since the question was raised. And first, it's not really a giant bathtub. I think I might have used the term a big heavy bathtub. Just so that we're clear, I've gotten more information about the heights of groundwater. At the peak groundwater height, it varies over the site. At the peak groundwater height, at the point of the garage closest to the street, the bottom of the slab is at 10 feet above mean sea level. And the highest peak groundwater is at 10 feet above mean sea level, so it's right about there. Then the slab is not level, the slab goes.
I'm sorry, let me, let me, the, the report doesn't say that. The report says at Parcell A, closest to the street, groundwater is at seven feet mean. And that's mean, that's not peak, so we can expect in rainy, wet seasons, it's gonna be higher.
So I'm not talking at the front of the site, I'm talking at where the garage starts. So we have, depends, so the, the thing slopes and the ground, so both the grade, the surface grade slopes and also the groundwater peak changes height.
From, from seven to 15, at the back of Parcell A.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So what I was looking at is at the, is for the garage. Uh, the lowest point of the construction, of course, is the subterranean garage. So at the lowest point of the slab of the garage, at that point is where the peak groundwater, groundwater was at 10 feet above MSL. And then, but I, I just wanted to finish. It then goes deeper because it's not level, it goes deeper and then it goes up a little. And then also the groundwater is higher above MSL as you go further north towards the hill. It's, the groundwater is kind of going down. And as you do that, correct me, uh, correct me if I get it wrong, but I think at the very northernmost part of the, the bottom of the slab, I think it is one and a half feet. The slab is one and a half feet below the point of peak groundwater. And then at the deepest part is actually kind of in the middle, I think we're two feet.
So to, to, just to summarize, your representation is that the garage is not deep enough to cause any appreciable change to the subterranean flow?
So that's certainly true, but then there's another point. So I just wanted to start by relatively little of it is actually in groundwater, even at peak. And then the, the rate of flow is extraordinarily slow. This is a more, it's a slight slope, it's a very ponding effect. It's like a slow-moving subterranean pond. So once it's built, it just fills up around and keeps slowly flowing.
Okay, John has a question.
According to your plans though, your, your groundwater is five feet below, uh, surface at, at Cross Creek Road. And it's 15 feet at the most in the back.
That's above, below surface.
Okay, but, but the garage is 18 feet high. So you're five feet below and you're going 18 feet, so you're, you're what, 13 feet into groundwater?
So no, it gets confusing because some of the measurements are from finished grade, so remember finished grade.
And, and natural grade is no more than two and a half feet, okay, at that point.
Uh, what's the finished grade, Jeff?
Come, come up to the, um, microphone.
Say your name, please.
Jeff C. Rock.
I know who you are.
And I'm the construction manager for the project. So the historic high groundwater at the southern end of the site is five feet below existing grade.
Right.
So it's not relative to sea level, it's relative to existing.
Right, so if you have a five foot, you dig down five feet, you hit water. Wouldn't you assume if you dug, dug down 18 feet to the bottom of the garage, there might be some water there?
We are assuming that.
Okay, so it is floating in 13 feet of water.
Remember, this is historic high, so assuming, assuming, assuming we're digging at the historic high, then we will hit groundwater at five feet below existing grade.
But we know, the people who've lived here know that the library basement is flooded, the sheriff station above, north of that is flooded. Uh, the building across the street, the Knapp Building, has filled up to the brim, the whole parking lot full of water in the past. So this 13 feet does do something, it fills things up, this 13 feet of water.
That's why, yeah, that's why we've designed our garage to reside within the water.
Because it is a bathtub though, it, it.
Clarify that, we're not 13 feet into the ground.
Correct, we're not 13 feet into the groundwater. We anticipate, we, so the groundwater is, uh, what's the best way to explain this? If the groundwater is at five feet right now below existing grade, the grade is coming up where the parking garage is. So the bottom of the parking garage, the bottom of the slab of the parking garage, at its deepest point, when the historic, when the groundwater is at its historic high, will be about six feet into the groundwater.
The math doesn't work.
I think the math doesn't.
The garage is not at Civic Center Way, it's up the hill.
It is, it's up, it's up.
It's a, it's at, the garage is at, is a higher elevation than existing.
Not a whole lot according to your plans, maybe a foot or two. Okay, but what I'm saying is it's flooded all around you, every single building around you is flooded.
So what, so the question is.
So you're saying that.
Go ahead.
You're, you're saying that you're making it somehow waterproof, so the water doesn't get into it.
Correct.
Okay, what happens if it leaks? What do you do? It's gonna fill full of water.
So, so. We have this scenario in many of our projects, especially the area around Cedar Sinai has very high groundwater and we have very deep subterranean garages that go floors into the groundwater.
And they use pylons, right?
And with the modern, with, with, with the modern construction techniques, you make them waterproof and they simply don't intrude. It, so we, we will, our, our techniques will make it not intrude.
Now, let me ask you one last question.
Just a second, we need to focus on differences between the, let me call it, the old project and the new project, all right? Both projects have subterranean garages.
But the new one. But the, the older ones were up the hill.
And they were separated, so they weren't, they weren't.
All right, so is the, is, do you feel?
But we had a subterranean garage right up at the front in the approved project too. We just, we had three.
My main concern was simply that by combining it all into one, you're creating one big blockage that otherwise it would, separate islands and the flow could maybe go around it, whatever. You're saying that it's really not deep enough to impinge on any of that flow.
That our engineer confirmed, like, it, it, it's also a very slow flow, so it's not like there's something to, like, hit and go around. It just slowly goes around. And with the grand scheme of the campus, it's a relatively small area. You look at the site plan, it's a small area. So you're just, you know, putting a relatively small thing into a slow-flowing pond.
Okay, we'll see, we'll see.
Are there further comments on hydrology?
Yes, just one.
Okay.
And you, you, I guess you skated on this because you were in 2008. But since then, we've been told by Coastal, there's a nine-foot sea rise that you have to account for. Well, that puts you, you know, the ocean in your front yard and you can have boats come in. So I just wonder why you don't have a way to, this thing fills up like the building right across the street from you. It buried a whole bunch of cars. And you have no way to pump it out or anything?
So, um, I, I appreciate that the question was raised and we did some quick digging. So the Coastal Commission's most recent sea level rise policy guidance says that by the year 2100, sea levels may rise by approximately 2.4 to 6.9 feet, with a potential and unlikely extreme scenario of 10.2 feet. The front of the project site along Civic Center Way is at 15.7 feet above the mean sea level. The lowest building is at 20.6 feet above mean sea level. So to be impacted in any way, the sea level would have to rise 15.7 feet, far in excess of the extreme level that the Coastal Commission doesn't think likely.
This is sort of a moot point because you don't have to follow it, but we just got a letter from San Nine Fe.
I, I was, I was going to add, and of course, if ever a scenario like that happens, Pacific Coast Highway can't be driven on. I mean, we're not even gonna have any traffic.
That's right. Truck trips will be reduced remarkably. Chris, any, any, any particular issue that, that speaks to you about the difference between the two projects?
Uh, in terms of differences, the main one was just, um, with the, the restaurant use moving around, I did feel that, well, regardless, I feel we need to have a clear definition of what we mean by restaurant space, which we already started on. And I think we should close that because I think this rounded negotiation is one level and then your first tenant is gonna be another level. So that's my main thing really.
Okay, okay.
Well, I have one, one that I, I brought up earlier, I just wanna make sure we consider.
Traffic and we've had service area, we've got hydrology, what else you got?
And I'm talking about extra square footage that the city did not give them when they did the deal.
This is the storage area we're talking about now?
Yes, yes. And I don't, I don't see anywhere in the code where it says it's not square foot.
An inhabitable space below.
Note on that too, yeah.
It's over six and a half feet.
I was, I've been looking into that and the reason it's not included is because the definition of floor area ratio only accounts for gross floor area that's above grade. And the square footage allowed for the project is based on the point two oh floor area ratio. So the 112,0058 square feet that they're approved for is not required to consider, based on the definitions, what's below grade.
So they could fill that, they could fill that garage with 70,000 square feet and, and they get it for free.
Not meet their parking requirement.
What?
As long as it's Indian bingo.
I, I don't, that one I don't go for.
All right, so are we moving in the direction of?
We're, we're moving in the, we're moving in the. In the direction of about take five. In the direction of about take five and come back.
Well, we're doing that. We're also moving in the direction of 10 o'clock. So, let's try to take five only. And we'll come back at, at nine, well, all right, 9:46. Okay, we're, back in session. And we were looking for, I assume we're going to get a, a list of proposed conditions that, that individual council member, or commission members may want to add to the project. And it would be basically a, a motion to approve the project subject, subject to conditions. So, we've, we've covered traffic, we've covered service area, we've talked about hydrology. Are there specific conditions that somebody wants to start in?
Can I start with a bigger one? This might be more discussion than just a simple condition. But when I, when I talked to Brian Gordon about the restaurant use, the impression I got that was that it was largely to be a family-style, casual, resident-serving kind of restaurant use, for the most part. He's nodding his head.
Yes, that's our expectation.
Let the record reflect. I, I don't, I don't understand the need for the space and the traffic flow and all that for the, the valet parking area. I don't see valet parking as something that is resident-serving or, or something that locals need or want. And I just wondered, what, is that, is that necessary? Is that?
We want the flexibility of the valet parking and it wouldn't necessarily be just for the restaurants. Some shopping facilities also have valet parking, too. So, we wanted to have the flexibility to have some of the parking be valet parked.
I guess my thought was that maybe if that weren't that, then there would be more emergency egress, if that were a, an option that wasn't valet. I don't know, I, I don't.
In an emergency, they wouldn't have any cars on the road. So, I don't think it creates an issue. And for, for some experiences, it is nice to be able to have the valet. And we, our goal, of course, is to make it as attractive as possible.
And how, what proportion of the parking would, would be valet in the end? Or, let me rephrase it, how much of it would be not valet?
So, we don't really know. People would choose to do what you want. Most people prefer just to park. We have surface parking, we have the underground parking. Most people would prefer to park if, themselves. If you prefer to go to a valet, you go to the valet. But it wouldn't be something that we would control, it'd be something that visitors do.
There's no reserve.
The valet would be parking in the parking lot on, onsite. There won't be offsite valet, it would be parking in the spots.
There's a, there's a, there's a special valet ramp right there to go down into the garage.
So, there'd be no apportionment that says X number of spaces are dedicated to the valet or vice versa?
I mean, maybe if they had particular needs, you'd say, these are for the valet. But it would probably change over time, based on whatever the valet's needs are.
I, I would just like to somehow ensure that the vast majority of the parking isn't that.
Well, we, we believe that. I mean, for, first, you've got all the surface parking, which would just be people driving around. I would be shocked if it is, if the demand would ever be that much. People tend not to wanna pay for valet parking unless.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know how that could be conditioned, but that was.
Well, a, a quick question on that. In, in the valet areas, do we, do you have a different parking pattern? Because I know that you can get more density. Is that specifically lined out on your plan or?
No, it's still the same, it's still the same number of parking spaces. It's just, it's a convenience that we think some minority of people who visit would like to use. And I think the market just takes care of itself, because not that many people choose to use those things.
Okay.
Okay, so, I, I think we're gonna have, what we're gonna try to do here is do some, a, a series of straw votes. I know that we're gonna have a lot. Everybody's got their own ideas about what they wanna add. And let's see whether we can get three votes in favor of it or not. I'm sorry, what? Just pass them down.
Oh, geez. These are prepared, wow, nice job, Steve.
I got a question, fire pits. One of, one of the speakers mentioned you're putting in fire pits?
I think there were, I think, I, I think the landscape plan had a couple. Am I remembering that correctly? Two, two fire features in the courtyard area.
You may wanna rethink that, all right? I mean, you just had the fire, okay? And the problem is, when people come into, into Malibu who aren't familiar with what the San Antlers are doing, the chances of them doing something stupid and starting a fire are real high.
So, this is not that kind of a fire pit. This would just be a natural gas aesthetic feature. It wouldn't be burning wood. It'd be a natural gas feature that you, you turn on and you have a little bit of an effect. It wouldn't create any ash or embers or, or burn anything other than a small amount of natural gas.
Bonnie, is that, is that spelled out in their entitlements?
I don't believe that specification is in there.
It's just part of the plan that, that we've submitted.
And my question of your designer is, could it be water feature? Because we have been, we have, we, in the past, we've kept houses from having fire pits, same kind.
I mean, we, we, we thought the aesthetic would look good and there's no safety issue.
Well, if somebody sticks, sticks a napkin into it, right, then somebody's on fire.
Well, I suppose the candle on the table, too.
Steve.
Let me start, just tell you what I got here, we, wanna start there?
Do we wanna go? We wanna go one by one?
One by one, ignore the first one, okay? The first one, I was trying to deal with the extra hours, but I think we could, my idea, it isn't that good. So, there may be a better way to do that. The second, the second one that I wanna suggest is a condition. Under traffic, large truck deliveries to onsite tenant will not occur before 7:00 AM or during peak hours, which are 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 5:00 PM. No trash recycling pickup is permitted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Would there be an exception for someone running their business starting at 7:00 AM? Could they come in early if they have to get more food for that morning's preparation?
These are trucks.
Trucks.
I know, I know, but if I'm running a restaurant and I open at seven, because they've got earlier hours, six was your earliest?
That's what we're requesting, is six is the earliest. Is there a copy of that that we could look at?
I'm sorry, say again.
Is there a copy of that that we could look at, just to review it while you do?
Sure. You have an extra one, Steve?
Well, Steve, I have a suggestion on that.
Yeah? Just, just a second, can, can we get staff, the, the current restrictions on, on deliveries is?
We don't, we don't have a specification for it, but Commissioner Mazza had asked what condition we had put on the Whole Foods project. And it's similar to what Commissioner Euring is talking about.
That's where I got it from.
Yeah, it, it specifies, it doesn't specify the noting, not occurring before 7:00 AM, but it does say the peak hours, not outside of the, it has to be outside of peak hours.
Okay, and, and, and keep in mind that, that this is all, again, part of, we, we don't have exactly a free hand here. I mean, if we put in a condition that, that the entire project has to be occupied as a store for white mice, it's not gonna be accepted and we're just gonna be spinning our wheels. So, let's, so let's talk about, with the people who are there, as to whether and the extent to which the conditions are deal killers or not.
Yeah, and, and, and I just wanna say, I, I, and Trevor, you can tell us if we're wrong. There's certain things that we have to make findings about neighborhood and, and the effects on the areas around it. And that's why we put things like.
Yeah, the, the, the conditions is for neighborhood compatibility, so you can make the findings for the CUP, I assume.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the first one we're gonna talk about, then, is the large truck deliveries to the onsite tenants shall not occur before 7:00 AM or during peak hours. No trash or recycling pickup is permitted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Did you have a suggestion about early opening restaurants that might mitigate that somewhat?
So, I, I think we're fine with the language that was handed out about the large trucks.
Okay. What's, what's the four o'clock and five o'clock? Is that weekend and weekday?
Those you just identified as the peak hours, when there's more pedestrian traffic in the place than.
We just need to know which one to enforce, four o'clock or five o'clock.
Yeah, four, yeah, four o'clock and five o'clock. Do you mean four o'clock and weekdays, five o'clock and weekends?
No, I.
Or ju- just wanna pick one of those?
Make it four.
Okay.
So, is this the same as Whole Foods?
Were you, you meaning seven to nine AM and four to five PM?
No, same, they could, they could, truck can come in between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, right? The delivery. Then, at 9:00 AM, there's no truck deliveries, because that's the peak hours of, of, in the morning.
Till?
Till, and then in the after, and they can come in the rest of the day until 4:00 PM.
When can they not come in after 9:00 AM?
Yeah, what's the start, so you can't, maybe between midnight and 7:00 AM? Is there a?
Because the way it states here, it looks like you can only, like, you couldn't have any deliveries between nine and four.
That's the way it is, yeah.
That's what it's meant to be.
Okay, and so, then, so your deliveries would just come between seven and nine AM and then four and?
Four until what time at night?
When do people go to, what does it say at Whole Foods, eight?
Whole Foods doesn't, it just says you can't, let's see, oh.
I know there's a nighttime thing, because.
Let's do till nine.
Eight sounds reasonable.
When they dump their trash, they, they don't like the trucks.
What, it says, you can, you can do, trash is prohibited after 10:00 PM. Do you wanna keep it consistent with the trash pickup? So, then it would be 10:00 PM for?
10:00 PM, sorry.
Sure.
So, I, I missed some of that. Were we saying the AM peak is 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, as I understood it?
Uh, no, what they're saying is, large truck deliveries to the onsite shall not incur, it's gonna be between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM or during peak hours, which are 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. No trash or recycling pickup is permitted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Is that, do you get that?
I hate to, hate to do this to you, but you're saying that, that a, a truck delivery cannot be made between 9:00 AM in the morning and four in the afternoon? It has to be made in the evening?
That's not what you mean, is it? I thought it was a peak hour.
That was not what I was, that was not my intention.
My, my understanding is that the commissioner was suggesting no large truck deliveries before 7:00 AM.
Right.
And then during the, the peak hours.
Right, 9:00 AM and 4:00.
Now, as I understood it, the peak hours are, happen to be 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and then four to five PM.
Is that?
I can live with that.
That's, well.
You wrote it.
Okay, so, no, no.
And no later than 10:00 PM.
So, no deliveries shall occur between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM? Is that what we're saying?
He's saying, he's saying that no deliveries before 7:00 AM.
We, we actually mean before 9:00 AM, right?
No, 7:00 AM.
No, he's saying nine, because seven to nine AM is a rush hour morning peak.
Yeah, so you were saying you can't deliver between seven and nine AM, right?
So, he's saying from 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM.
But you also can't deliver before 7:00 AM.
From 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM.
So, ten, no deliveries between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM? And then, and, and is that it?
And not four, between four and five, is what he was saying.
Okay, did?
I don't know why, I mean, that's, rush hour tends to run a little later, but whatever. Four to six.
Okay, what I wanted to do, I don't, I wanted them not to come in before seven o'clock in the morning, because that's gonna wake up all the, the whole goddamn neighborhood, right?
Got it.
So, if they don't come in, if they don't do any pickups, any truck deliveries between seven and nine in the morning, all right? And then, during the rest of the day, they, they can go on until four, four or five in the afternoon.
That's what we just said.
Okay.
So, you're really saying they can't do any before nine AM?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so, large truck deliveries. Okay, so large truck deliveries to the onsite tenant shall not incur between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM, and between four and five PM, and then no trash or recycling pickup is permitted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Is that reflected?
That's it.
Okay, do we have a straw?
Okay, so you were talking.
Is that?
I'm sorry, we're, we're trying to figure this out.
Probably weren't listening to what we were saying, because it's gotten even more interesting. Mr. Trevor, please.
So the proposition is that the large truck deliveries to the site shall not occur between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM, and between four PM and five PM, and then no trash or recycling?
I'm sorry, slow, I'm sorry, Trevor, please, slow. Shall not occur between 10:00 at night and nine in the morning, and shall not occur when?
Between four o'clock and five o'clock in the afternoon.
So I am told that morning deliveries are important, because that's when most deliveries would be made. Instead of 10:00 PM to nine AM, could we go 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM so that we can get the morning deliveries? I'm told that that's when a lot of the deliveries are coming.
What does Whole Foods say? You should be up at seven o'clock anyway.
What does Whole Foods say? Do we know what Whole Foods says?
It doesn't specify except to avoid peak hours.
That's all, okay.
And one of the, so if they're there, if they're there before seven, so one of the challenges is we're going to have a multiplicity of tenants, of course, and so they will have different delivery times, but we're told that most deliveries come early, so.
Not before seven o'clock. As long as you don't say before seven o'clock, I don't have a problem.
Okay, well, then we're good.
So not before seven?
Not before seven.
So let me repeat it.
So if we do 10?
Just let him do it, because otherwise we're lost.
Okay, so large truck deliveries to the onsite tenant shall not occur between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and between four and five PM.
Yes.
And then there's no trash or recycling pickup is permitted between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Yes.
I just want to call it the obvious. What time's your first restaurant open in the morning? Your juice bars?
We haven't decided.
So, so if we have them, the earliest we are requesting is 6:00 AM for juice bars or, or coffee, so they would have to get deliveries the day before.
Or bring a small delivery in their car or something.
If they don't have coffee at 7:00 AM, they don't have a lot of coffee. We've got a long way to go, folks.
Do we have consensus on this?
Yes, yes. I'm not even going to ask, but we got consensus on that.
Okay.
Let's do the next one.
We'll insert that on page 13, under, is new condition 21.
Okay, my next suggestion is the property owner applicant or their successor shall prohibit all delivery trucks from loading and unloading any goods on any portion of Civic Center Way at all times. Property owner or property owner's agent will incorporate this restriction into all tenant's lease agreements, and shall provide the city planning department a copy of the relevant portions of the executed lease agreement containing this restriction prior to the final inspection and tenant occupancy.
Okay.
Do we have any similar conditions on the Paws Road? I would assume no.
On the what?
On the Paws Road, the, the, the road along the west border of the property?
The lane.
The lane, yeah.
There are some, actually, there are some delivery areas along that.
Yeah, so, so you're eliminating that just the Civic Center, nothing about the?
I'm willing, I mean...
Typically, the concern is when they park in the, the turn lane, in the middle of the road.
Okay, okay, I'm good. Okay, that was acceptable to the applicant, so that would...
Okay, so do we have consensus on, on that second edition?
Yeah.
So that'll be new condition 22.
All right. Do the next one. Trash and storage. Trash container areas must have drainage from adjoining roofs and pavement diverted around the area. Trash containers must be screened or walled to prevent offsite transport of trash, and trash containers must be covered and locked to prevent trash overflow.
That's fine with the applicant.
Huh? Is this really something we include in conditions?
It's been done before.
This is the whole deal about...
Right.
Yeah, a quick question on that first condition, or first note there. The drainage, what's the idea? Just to keep, like, the waste from getting mixed with water?
Water, I have a...
It's a water quality related condition.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so this will be under commercial development and new condition number 23? Is there consensus and that's acceptable by the applicant?
Have consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, next one.
I know you agree. You wrote it.
That's why I agree. You asked me, you asked me the question, I gave you the answer.
The applicant shall?
Oh, the applicant shall protect people using onsite commercial spaces, walkways, and outdoor gathering spaces from potential vehicle impact by installing bollards or the equivalent design feature between such areas and vehicle parking areas and driveways. The final design and location of the protected design feature shall be reviewed and approved by the planning director prior to issuance of the building permit.
Isn't this part of our code?
That's for outdoor, for dining areas.
It's for outdoor seating areas where head-in or angled parking.
I don't know if there is any, but...
Is this different than that?
No, that's, that's...
That's our code.
Are we just asking for compliance with the bollard restrictions?
Right, that's the same, yeah, that's...
We don't need to put that as a condition since they're already required to comply with the?
How's that?
There's nothing in, there's nothing in the agreement that says they have to comply with our municipal code.
Okay, then, well, but the code, the, the code that covers this is, is one of those that is the police power codes that we do have to comply with, and I'm concerned about this language because it's vague enough that it could, it could imply a lot more bollards. We are complying.
Would you, would you accept a condition to comply with the city's bollard ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Would that be acceptable to the?
I can live with that.
Okay, well, consensus? Anybody object?
That's fine. I don't see any on the map at all.
That'll be new number 24.
Okay, the next one, Bonnie, I couldn't, I, you know, I, when I was going through this, this one deals with the colors of the materials. That may be in there. I couldn't find it someplace, though.
Um, I, I don't believe this is in there, probably because it's a standard condition when you're in an LCP scenic area, and this isn't specifically an LCP scenic area.
The normal municipal code already has provisions regarding reflective surfaces.
Right, that is covered.
And you just added a condition about reflective materials.
I'd like to weigh in that there's, there's a counter threat here that I know the big initiative in the city of LA is for white roofs, for cooling, and I have a white roof on my house, and it changed my heating radically, so I wouldn't advocate a white roof here because I know that's a view issue from above, but a lighter colored roof might be preferable to, to insisting that it be darker.
I think that's, I think that's already part of the building code, a white roof, and it's, there's a range of colors and finishes that actually fit that category that aren't straight up white.
So we don't need a condition here?
I think we're okay.
My most, my major concern is there are a bunch of houses, there are a couple of houses right above this looking down, and if they're going to put stuff on the roofs, I just want to make sure they're shielded, or they've got them, you know, somehow, so the person up there isn't looking down at a, at a mirror going back up at them.
Could possibly do some screening, but the roof heights that they've already designed might interfere with that, and then also from, you know, if you're at certain heights and angles, there won't be any way to screen some things from the roof, just depending on, you know, the line of sight.
Can we bring up that condition that we proposed to modify? I think it addressed part of this as well. Remember, it said, uh?
Yeah, it was just the third to last line.
About the color?
About the colors and the reflective.
That was actually an energy mitigation measure.
Yeah, but I think it addresses this issue.
It addresses reflective materials.
But it also said what the colors to be used in it.
Well, also...
It eliminated white. White was what it called for, but the, the revised language would eliminate that.
We've presented images of what our proposal is, and it, in my reading, would comply with this, but I'm concerned about how this could otherwise be interpreted. It could be fine to say that we have to be in substantial compliance with the images we presented.
What?
With the images we presented, because you see from the, what we presented, it, you see what it is.
That, that opens up a can of worms, because the images may have things in them that aren't, contrast with what's in a written text somewhere, and if we're referring to the images, then the legal descriptions don't match. That, that's a whole can of worms.
So what are we trying to do here?
So we could, you could alter the proposed condition here that says exterior walls shall be finished with non-reflective building materials. You can say also earth tones? Is that what we're looking for?
Don't we have that in our code?
Yes.
And then we just say, follow X code.
That's kind of the problem, because if we, to the extent we detail things which don't match our code, then we create possible ambiguities, probably conflicts between what we put down as conditions and what's in our code, and when we don't really intend it.
These are conditions that, this is a Whole Foods condition.
That's not to say that it, it might not be duplicative or partially duplicative of what we've got in the code, or partially contradictory to what we have in that.
Section 1739040 talks about structures shall be limited to colors compatible with, et cetera, so it's, it's called out.
In the code.
In the code.
Well, let's list that section. It must comply with, because remember, this is a special area.
Yeah, I'm just confirming.
What is it, 17?
Yeah, it's 17.39.040. It's property development design standards, and it's section, 39.040, it's section seven.
And Commissioner, could you summarize for us what that says?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it says, "Structures shall be limited to colors compatible with the surrounding environment and landscape earth tones, including shades of green, brown, gray, with no white or light or bright tones. Color palette shall be specified in plans submitted in building plan check, et cetera." So I think it lines up largely.
And that's consistent with the commissioner. That's fine.
That'd be fine, so?
That's fine.
We'll state that, instead of what's here, we'll state that it must be compatible with municipal code section 17.39040C. It's actually seven, sorry.
And, and your, your next one, following on that one?
Is there consensus on that?
On, on what, basically, follow the law, right?
Yeah.
But just, just to add to that, Steve's main concern sounded like bright, like solar reflections off solar panels or something shiny that would actually?
Well, that's covered in it.
That's already covered by the condition Bonnie added.
It's in there?
Bonnie, it has non-reflect.
And the next one about, is also, if not part of our code, part of the building code, is that, about recycling materials and? Property owner, read it, Steve.
Just, again, this came out of the Whole Foods. The property owner applicant or their successor shall contact with the city-approved holder to facilitate the recycling of all recoverable recyclable, recyclable materials. Recoverable materials shall include but not be limited to asphalt, dirt, earth material, lumber, concrete, glass, metals, drywall. Prior to the issuance of a building demolition permit, which we don't need, a waste reduction and recycling plan shall be submitted to the environmental sustainability for review and approval.
It's standard, isn't it? Isn't the waste, isn't the waste reduction probably, yeah. It seems, I just, this is something that all projects are required to comply with.
There's an existing condition that, that addresses recycling, so that's how that would be implemented.
An existing condition where in the?
It's in the city council resolution 0852, condition number 31.
Okay, as long as it's in there.
Okay, so scratch, just?
Scratch that.
All right. Got three more. Construction management techniques, including minimizing the amount of equipment used simultaneously and increasing the distance between admission sources shall be employed as feasible and appropriate. All trucks leaving construction sites shall adhere to California Vehicle Code. In addition, construction vehicles shall be covered when necessary, and their tires will be rinsed stop prior to leaving the property.
Not in the code? Ready?
That's often a mitigation measure or a standard condition. I'm just looking at these.
Did this special overlay district eliminate all this stuff?
We could, we could just say, you know, put these in if they're not already in the code, and then we don't have to spend the time right now to do all the checking.
Let's, um...
We don't want to really work on the language now, if, if we do, just thinking about Commissioner Hill's thought there. If we, if it's not in the code, I think we want to know it and do it now.
I mean, the only reason I came up with these things, like I said, I went through some other agreements, and I assumed they were put in the other agreements because we, you know, good fences make good neighbors.
Well, but, yeah, okay, so we think, with regard to this, I believe that these are requirements, although probably, maybe not in the detail of having tires rinsed, but most of these requirements are generally required by, if not our laws, other laws. But let me, but maybe we can short circuit it by asking?
So we have a construction management plan that we've submitted to the city that's being reviewed right now. I think it loosely incorporates these concepts. There's nothing here we have a problem with, so, and there's enough flexibility that if the city thinks there's a modification needed to the plan, we can make a modification.
If we put it in, you can live with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, let me ask you something. This was, this was originally approved in 2008. This is a question for Trevor. We had a municipal code in 2008. Our city council created this overlay district. I assume it had basically what our laws were in 2008. If we've done anything since, is it in there? Or, or can't we just get away by saying must follow municipal code? John, that's my last, John, if you, give me a second. That's my last condition I'm putting in there. Well, I'm saying that should take care of all this stuff.
Well, part of the development agreement, that, it means that anything new that's put in after development, that development agreement was put in place, they're entitled to the benefit of the, of the rules at the time the project was approved, so.
So they don't have to follow the dark sky ordinance, for example?
They don't have to follow it until the development agreement expires at the end of this year, and then they would have to come into compliance, so I'd imagine they're going to design this project to be dark sky compliant, because by the time they're going to turn on the lights, they're going to have to be compliant with the dark skies ordinance, so.
And how about all the other ordinances that have come along, like trash hauling or whatever it is?
I mean, there were rules in place about trash hauling, I assume in 2008. I mean, this is?
Right. I think there are...
But John's question is, look, if, if there were laws that came into, into effect after their agreement was passed, and at the end of the time when their, their agreement runs out, which is the end of the year, would they have to comply with all the rest of the issues in the municipal code?
Once, once the development agreement expires, then they'll have to comply with everything in the municipal code.
Okay. So what is, maybe I can ask you. Is there any reason why, you only have 11 months. Is there any reason why you shouldn't follow municipal code as it stands today?
So the challenge is, the challenge is, I don't have an analysis of every provision, so what, what we would respectfully request is that we be allowed to use the rights that we've got under development agreement, and whatever that means, that means, and I can't, you know, I'm a lawyer, I can't sit here and guess about everything that might mean, so I couldn't agree to a blanket thing where I don't know the ramifications. These one-by-one issues are helpful because we can look at each one and confirm it's not a problem.
We, it, it would be unfair for us to require them to give up the benefits of the development agreement, but if there are particular conditions that, you know, we've come through and that's what we're looking at here, that we think are project-specific, that need to, need to be implemented to mitigate impacts from the changes to the project here, then that would be appropriate for us to, to add in.
So I, I don't, I don't think that there's any of the remaining conditions that Steve has suggested that are objectionable to other members of the commission, if they're acceptable to the applicant.
So on the dark skies, that's what we followed, and that's what we've submitted, so that is fine. On the biology, the use of pesticides, I think that's fine. Am I correct about that? Oh, I'm sorry, my client hasn't read it.
Okay, so to confirm, you're accepting number 28 at the top of the page?
Where's these numbers?
And we had consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, dark skies, there was, that was accepted by the applicant, and[1671.12] was consensus here?
Let me just add on dark skies, the, the, the project description specs lighting around the perimeter of the project, which is expressly prohibited by the dark sky ordinance, so just calling that out as something that you have in your spec that would be eliminated.
Oh, I didn't, I thought from, I thought our lighting was designed to the dark sky ordinance.
Lighting around the perimeter is prohibited.
It says, "All exterior lighting shall be zone one dark sky compliant and shall avoid lighting of natural habitat areas."
Right, that's, okay.
So I thought that we had.
Is that from the dark skies ordinance? Commissioner, is that, is that the same standard?
I believe it is.
I mean, the, the dark sky ordinance has specific standards in it, so the perimeter lighting thing is, is a specific dark sky standard, but it, it might not be something that goes with zone one under the California building.
I mean, we may, we may want to just eliminate this, they're going to have to essentially comply with dark skies anyway, this could end up being more favorable to them by putting something in here that could conflict with the dark skies ordinance.
So, so, again, I just want to unconfuse me.
You okay with that?
January one of next year, no matter what happens, they've got to follow the dark sky ordinance.
Yeah.
And, and the formula retail and all that kind of stuff.
Everything comes back into play once the.
January first.
Once the development.
Okay, and, and there's no way you can build this thing in eleven months.
Okay, so.
So it's kind of irrelevant.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, so we're going to just say they're going to, we'll take that out and let them.
I mean, if.
Regulations as a normal dark sky.
It'll come into play, so if they want to build it and have it for eleven months, noncompliant, then change everything.
The one just above that, the one that talks about prior to the planning inspection, the applicant shall admit as-built survey depicting dimensions in square footage, that was in Whole Foods, and I assume, Bonnie, that's something you guys want.
Yeah, we asked for that for purposes of making it easier to implement the formula retail rules.
And that's fine.
That's fine, and then how about the?
So consensus on the page fifteen, item thirty-one insertion?
Yes.
How about biology?
Fine.
Oh, I got.
Okay, and then biology consensus too?
Yes.
Acceptable, okay.
First question, what, did we decide anything on fire pits? We discussed it, and I, we sort of left it hanging before the break.
I don't like fire pits either.
Did we do a straw vote and say we don't want that, or?
Fire pits are prohibited, that's the condition to add? Is there?
Is there three votes for that?
Yeah.
Yes, there's three votes.
Okay, and then I, I don't know that I need to make the argument, but I can, but on the, I would require a professional archaeologist present during all excavation. Julie Tumamite Stensley requested that, the Chumash chief or head, whatever her title is.
You're proposing for, to add a monitor for which part?
During excavation.
Okay.
You know, this is, I can make the argument all night about how this is one of the prime Chumash sites right there, and given the alluvial deposits, I don't think, she's right, it's not unexpected that we'd find something seven, eight, ten feet down.
So our standard, excuse me. Our standard condition is that we have a monitor on site and not necessarily an archaeologist on site, and what's being proposed is that we have an archaeologist on site during all excavation.
So what, what we see in other places and what we would request here is that we have a qualified Native American Resources monitor on site, which I think is more common.
That is more common, and that's what we usually require, but, but Commissioner Hill is suggesting that we require an archaeologist, which I.
As long as it's someone with some expertise and they're, they're, so to be able to identify, you know, they can read stratigraphy and they can tell all that kind of stuff, it's not just a sort of ceremonial person.
So what was the term?
And that's, that's the norm for those monitors, they're certified monitors.
And, and present during excavation.
During excavation, during the digging.
Yeah.
So do you agree with that? Do you need to put in a condition, or do you have to name what kind?
No, because I, when I spoke to Julie, she said either one, professional or a, like, well, she volunteered herself as having many years of experience, so that.
So what are we saying now?
There's a lot who will volunteer themselves for that job.
I would suggest a qualified Native American Resources monitor, and then the city.
Qualified.
And then the city has to interpret and make sure it's enforced.
Okay.
Okay, so then the condition would be to add the city's standard condition requiring a qualified.
A qualified Native American Resources monitor.
Okay, or archaeologist, would either?
Or archaeologist, yeah.
Okay, during all excavation, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we, we've already talked about the emergency gates, I just wanted to pin that down, we've got the, I think we need the straw vote to, we want to require them to be eighteen feet wide, like Jefferson suggested, so that two fire trucks could pass.
Yes.
Okay, and that's on one side, and on the other side, back, a similar gate on the side behind you.
Hold on, hold on, Chris.
Let's, let's, was this already a proposed condition, or do we need to add a condition here about this?
The proposed condition said that we would work with the city and the neighbor to create a connection, it did not specify a width.
Okay.
We're fine to say eighteen feet.
You just have to try to do it.
Okay, and, and I'm tying that down a little tighter to say that it also have some manual override, so it can be, it's not, it's still going to work during a power failure, and that we do something similar on the other side, on the library side.
Well, what we did, what we did on, knock box may only be owned by, may only be used by firemen, not even a cop can use it, but we did on, well, revage, because the neighbors were all worried about getting out, was having a knock box and a, something that could be opened by force or something. I can't remember the exact terms, but if you have a fire coming down on you, you can get it open somehow.
Yeah, we don't want to have to wait for a fire department.
So may I suggest the principle is fine, and the way I think the condition was proposed, it says we work with the city to figure it out, and that's fine, that principle of someone other than a firefighter in an emergency being able to open it is fine.
And, and a similar gate on the side leading behind the library.
To make sure I understand, so the upper road that's exiting and then hits La Paz Lane and goes down, if you went straight across, you'd be to behind the library parcel, that area.
Just because you don't know if there's a, there's a sniper, there's a tsunami, you don't know where the threat is coming from, you, you want to be able to go whichever way you need to go.
So we can do that, I want to be clear that the, that's the flagpole of lot C.
That's property owned by the city.
That city owns property.
The city would.
So, I mean, we'll cooperate with that, it's just not our property, it's city property.
Okay.
Getting this, Trevor?
Okay, I'm trying to.
Is this a change to your proposed condition sixty?
Yes.
Okay, so let's.
It's putting detail on that.
Okay, condition sixty, "An evacuation plan for the La Paz project shall incorporate the use of the facility for emergency use by the surrounding property owners as well as emergency responders as part of the evacuation plan, and prior to the first certificate of occupants, the applicant shall seek approval from the city for an emergency access driveway connecting the property and the park at Cross Creek at the northeast corner of parcel A. The evacuation plan shall include identification signage for the emergency access driveway. The evacuation plan shall be prepared in conjunction with the city's emergency services coordinator." And I think you wanted to say, you wanted to add not just the park at Cross Creek, but also to the library?
The county-owned property to the west.
Northwest or west, northwest.
Okay, to, we'll say to the property, you said to the northwest.
I think it's to the, to the west.
To the west.
Basically with the west.
Yeah, I think we all know what it is, to the west, is that, is that sufficient? Do we need to put this knock box conditions in, are we sufficient?
I think that's good enough.
I think that's good.
I did have just one last question, I wasn't, when, when, when Zuma spoke, he mentioned, I think, something about ambulances being able to access from the pedestrian area, did anyone else catch what he was trying to get there, I wasn't sure.
He was trying to get you to drive on the sidewalks.
Do we need anything for that?
I don't know.
Well, let's just, let's just go and finish the ones we know.
There's a, some kind of ballard design that a fire department can get, knock the ballard out of the way?
They have removable ballards, but we have a ballard law.
Okay, all right, okay, next, do we have an appetite for a condition that the maintenance of La Paz Lane, the cost of that maintenance be tied by, I don't know, a deed restriction to the owner of parcel A rather than being city?
It's, we already have a development, an agreement in place about the easement agreement, they're going to construct it and maintain it.
And, okay, I missed that, okay. The parking garage, I understand you have pumps if there's flooding, but it's going to need some kind of periodic washing, I don't know how often, but with all the car oils and things that get in there, and unlike a lot of parking lots, it's going to, it's not exposed to rainwater, so it doesn't have any sort of incremental gradual cleaning effect, you're going to need to clean it at some point or another, and I would want to make sure that all that toxic wastewater be handled in an appropriate way, and I don't know if that means vacuuming up and trucking it out, or what you do with that.
May I suggest, because I also don't know how, the principle is fine, that we submit a plan for any wastewater generated from subterranean garage cleaning to the city for approval? And then we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, so the condition is that the applicant shall submit a plan for cleaning the parking garage?
Actually, it's the disposable of the wastewater arising from the cleaning of the garage.
Yeah, right.
Some plan for.
Now, would that go to the city, or would it go to the sewer?
So we can, we can make the plan subject to the planning director's approval, this is a plan for removing the water from cleaning, is that what we're looking for?
Waste, wastewater from cleaning the garage.
Okay, so submit a plan for removing wastewater.
For the disposal or treatment of wastewater.
Okay, for disposal and treatment of wastewater that are from cleaning the garage.
Got to learn to write faster.
I'm doing my best. Subject to the planning director's approval.
And I just want to point out, page fourteen of seventeen says explicitly already, "Treat to remove oil and petroleum hydrocarbons at parking lots that are heavily used," so there's already a condition of operation.
But, but where do they put the wastewater?
Well, treat and remove, I mean.
Okay.
So, but at least we have something to kind of lean on already.
Okay.
So is consensus for this new condition about the wastewater from cleaning garage?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if this is a condition, this is maybe just, but you have twenty-eight electric vehicle charging spaces spec, do you have provisions for allowing or creating more of those as, as they become more popular?
So we could do that, what we're proposing is four EV immediately, and then twenty-four additional EV ready. I'm sorry. How many, twenty-eight? I'm sorry, I misspoke, twenty-eight EV ready.
Thirty-two total, okay.
Thirty-two, thirty-two total, and so as the demand shows, you add the actual devices. If ever there was more, you can just add conduit and do it more, there is, there was a question for a prior item about this, and I did want to point out that when you have an EV charger, you do say it's restricted, and so you don't want to overdo it because you're taking parking out, so as the demand shows people use it, you increase it gradually.
Okay, and that can proceed incrementally, there's no, we don't need to condition anything on that, yeah.
And the vast majority, yeah, sites add it all the time, it's just a little bit easier to add it now if you know you're going to need them.
Yeah, okay, and then finally, we've talked about a possibility of a right turn only sign coming out of the driveway, you guys pushed back against that, well, I didn't fully understand your, your hesitance.
Because I don't know the potential ramifications of it, I hesitate to agree to it, maybe we could follow the same model we had, that we evaluate it and submit, either do it or submit to the city a report that explains why it isn't practicable.
Adam, do you want to weigh in on that?
The right turn restriction, it's, it's a bit hard to enforce, so it's kind of like everything with PCH, having some form of barriers or device that would really prevent somebody from making a left.
Well, in this case, the enforcement is, it's not as critical as like a life-threatening kind of enforcement, it's more of a, if you've got eighty, ninety percent compliance, that would just help with the traffic flow.
Yeah, I think we also, I mean, we don't have evidence that's going to improve anything, and it could make some things worse, I would caution the commission in adopting that without.
Okay, so, so the question is to study, because I foresee that you're going to have an issue with that center lane with cars vying to use it as they're entering in and leaving from several directions, that that's a potential choke point.
Just to weigh in, sorry, one last, Trevor brought it up too, I mean, the trip distribution patterns would get basically overloaded, you'd have additional impacts to our signalized intersections that have not been analyzed, so that'd be something that would have to be kind of investigated a little bit further, to see what kind of impact that would be.
I'm not comfortable second guessing the traffic engineers.
Well, so I don't know how we call this out, other than to say that it's an issue and that you guys will be, you're alert to it now, and we'll cav your eyes out and see if, if you need to do something, you'll hopefully will recognize that.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yep. So, okay, John, have you got something?
Okay, I got the real easy ones, okay. First, I would like a definition placed in this of what they mean by a gallery.
What do you mean by what?
The gallery, because I don't want the dress gallery to show up.
I think it's defined, Bonnie, did you have a definition of it?
Gallery is not defined, but it is specified, it's listed in the developments standards for the town center overlay, and it says item three, this is under conditionally permitted uses, item three, cultural and artistic uses, and then it has in parentheses museums, galleries, and performing arts studios.
So we're going to have performing arts studios in here?
But they only ask for a gallery, so if you want to put restrictions on the gallery.
These require a conditional use permit, and they have not applied for that at this point, so you, it would come before you before any gallery went in.
So to be clear, this is only allowing general use, there wouldn't need to be a specific CUP for any gallery that would be put in.
But theoretically, some future council could make this whole center retail.
I mean, the, the use, the use mix is specified in here as far as the, the mix of uses is, has been studied and everything, so it.
But what I'm saying is, when it was originally planned and approved, they had so much office space, now that's got a little line through it, says office, gallery, okay, and therefore the office could disappear, and that takes away the mixed use, in my mind.
But that's not going to happen unless they come and get a CUP from you.
So they had to get a CUP for the gallery, and at that point, you would analyze the impacts of the gallery, impose any hours or special event limitations on how it's going to operate, and to ensure that parking and.
And then this all would still be good since we don't have mixed use anymore, right?
Why would there not be no mixed use?
Because you got to get rid of everything.
You're saying if, if they make all art galleries and no offices?
Yeah.
Well, if they tried to do that, then they would come in and propose it, and then if there's an issue with it, you could address it at that time.
Okay, I'm not going to fight that one. I think it's, I think it's poor practice for us to have undefined terms when we approve things. Do we have outside music? That's been banned already, right, in the agreement?
Yeah, I think, is there a limitation on, on music?
I think they need a permit for it, John, it's, it's.
We have no plans for outdoor music.
Yeah, I just want to cover our neighborhood, that's an amphitheater there, we've even banded on our own.
Oh, if you want to put a commission, how about?
Oh, your microphone, Chair Jennings, your microphone.
Yeah, okay, well, I'd like to put a condition in, no amplified music.
That would be fine with us.
Could you, just for the sake of not foreclosing doing it under a TUP or something in the future, you may want to, if you include an outright prohibition, you can't even get a temporary use permit for it.
So no amplified music without a TUP or CUP approved?
We give TUPs for, for parking lots.
Yeah, there might be a grand opening for the, you know, come on, an occasional event.
Well, then how do we say no amplified music?
Can, can I just read the section, the, the overlay district that calls this out? Because they, they say here, "Conditional use permit in accordance with the requirements for the city zoning ordinance," then it says for live entertainment that occurs after seven, or scheduled prior to seven, will require a temporary use permit, could we just modify that to say live entertainment or amplified music? So they could do it with the temporary use permit?
May I put, point something out to the commission? My colleague just pointed out to me, condition fifty-one that already exists that we're not seeking a change to, says, "No live entertainment or amplified sound will be permitted without a conditional use permit in accordance with the provisions of the Town Center Overlay District. Additionally, no outdoor speaker pager system shall be allowed." I think that covers us.
Okay, so in the future, though, just so I know, if somebody could come in and say, well, we got a, we've got Planet Hollywood, and we want to have rock and roll every night, we could give them a CUP.
They could give a CUP, they would comply with the zone.
Okay, that's sketchy for me, but I guess you can't do it. Now, we never got to the, to the hours, and I, I think, I don't think we did.
There was the proposal, I mean, when this comes to a head, I'm going to suggest that the, that you adopt staff's recommendation is laid out by Bonnie that had the two recommendations from them, and then on top of that, all the, the changes that we've made here, so that, that proposal would include their proposal that if there's any of these shops that open earlier, they would lose hours at night, but if you want to adjust that, we should either eliminate that condition or adjust that condition.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I'd like to.
The condition currently.
I would say that, that I would not go along with any change in hours if we are forced to keep one o'clock hours on all the restaurants, because that's, number one, the majority of the restaurants, with the exception of one in Civic Center, can't stay open till one, and therefore you're giving them unfair advantage over tenants. Now, number two, we, there's, there's a neighborhood there that backs right up to it that's an amphitheater, and, and you, you have an active, we're saying that you can have ten thousand square feet of people at one o'clock in the morning. I don't think that fits with Malibu, and, and granted, if the city's already giving it away, I don't see giving them anything else, because if we're forced to give them one o'clock, I think that's way out of standard. Because if we're forced to give them 1:00, I think that's way out of standard.
Let me see if I can state where you're going. You, you realize that the 1:00 is baked into the pie that they've already got, but you're not willing to extend the hours on the other end unless they would agree to go back to 11:00 for everything. Is that it?
That's correct.
Is there support for that?
Well, one accommodation, and maybe it's in it already, but would be to limit it to parcel A, so you can't have the late hours on parcel B, the one that's closer to the residence.
The 1:00 AM only applies to restaurants, and that's only on parcel A.
Only parcel A already, okay.
So, we would very much like to keep that flexibility. One, the concern seems to be a neighborhood noise concern, so perhaps the restriction should be on any outdoor uses. Because if you're merely having your indoor restaurant open to that hour, that won't cause any neighborhood noise.
Proposing a limit on the nighttime hours or the morning hours?
The nighttime hours is, I think, what the commissioner's referring to.
What you're proposing is no exterior service areas may be used.
No outdoor dining after 11:00 PM.
Okay, so the proposal would be then to adopt the proposed condition, the proposed operations are limited to 6:00 AM for coffee and juice establishments, and 7:00 AM for dining established serving breakfast to midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 AM on Friday through Sunday for any amount of time that a coffee or juice establishment or dining established serving breakfast juice is open before 8:00 AM, such establishment must close that amount of time earlier than otherwise allowed, and no outdoor dining is allowed after 11:00 PM. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I'd say outdoor dining or other activities.
This is dealing with the hours operation of restaurants.
Yeah, I'm saying 11:00 outside is shut down.
No outdoor service.
You don't have your poker party or whatever you wanna do.
That's what I meant.
No, no outdoor restaurant service after 11:00 PM?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll go with that.
All right, anything else, John?
Yeah.
Sorry, I do wanna clarify something. In the language of what's written for La Paz, it does say that, Bonnie just called it out, there's the concept of, I forget the phrase, but it was...
Concept of what?
Sorry, there was a use related to cultural events, cultural and artistic usage, performing arts, et cetera. What would be the operation hours for a performing arts facility if it's got a gallery space?
That's something you could establish as part of the CUP process if that ever came forward.
Would it be subject to these rules, or?
The development standards have that listed under a conditionally permitted use, so it would have to come get a CUP.
So there's been no hours established for a gallery or performing arts use at this time?
Right, that's right.
So right now, their starting position would be to go till 11:00 or 1:00?
That's for, no, this is for restaurants, right?
Well, no...
That's specific to restaurants.
Just to restaurants?
Yeah.
Yeah, our starting position would be that we're not entitled to get it without a conditional use. So if we had a tenant who wanted to do that, we would apply for a conditional use permit, and we would say we propose the following hours.
I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay, and then the last one, probably the most controversial. I'm still very concerned about this non-definition of service area. So in this particular area...
Non-definition of service area, is that what you said?
Service area, okay. They did a deal, they did a deal with Whole Foods. City signed up, got their deal. Whole Foods was restricted to specific outside areas, specific square feet under roof, okay? And this, this deal was not, this deal said you got 10,000 square feet. So what I would propose is, and this is trying to straighten out this only because we don't, we need a service area definition. In this case, we have to have one. And so I would say, the service area shall be defined as the gross square feet, interior, gross square feet minus kitchen and bathroom uses. And then, all outside service area, or all outside, all outside areas will be counted.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
This is, I think Chris covered this basically by saying, and we were talking about it, about, we're talking about gross service area, whether it's interior space or exterior space. It counts, we have a maximum of 10,000 square feet of service area. Things that don't count, whether, and now you start listing things that don't count, like storage areas and walk-in refrigerators and offices and things like...
The only question that was remaining when we left it hanging was, did we wanna set a proportion for how much of that service area can be dedicated to outside or not?
And let me suggest, the other side of that was, in the agreement, what they, what they're asking us, they're saying this wasn't prohibited, it's defined in the agreement, so I automatically get it. They got 10,000 square feet. That's what they got. That's what the agreement gave them. I think we stick, never mention, and we're not, you know, you start trying to define service area here, we're gonna have another problem when it comes down somewhere down the line. No, this is really so simple. The 10,000 square feet gross service area. Jeff, it was that simple. You guys could've defined it a long time ago.
If you had defined gross service area, then we'd know it. That's why I tried to define it.
So I thought the city already uses that term in calculating restaurant service.
Here's the problem. We use that term in calculating restaurants. We have never done it the same way twice.
There's not, in the code, there's not a definition for service area. It's, it only is mentioned in the parking standards where it specifies 50 square feet per, 50 square feet of service area requires one parking space.
Okay, so I'm gonna recommend we keep it at 10,000 square feet, period.
But we've got something we have to interpret, and the language here says already 10,000 square feet. We're debating it not being an applicant with an interest in using that space. So I think we need to take it further, so we have more clarity. And I'd come back to just, you know, you've got, whatever space that you're using for your restaurant use, you've got inside enclosed walls with a roof, so that's your starting number. Whatever space of that you don't use for service, and we define that service as the entire service inside, you're allowed to take that exterior space and serve outside. That's what I, that's where I would start.
I think...
If you could define that, I'm fine.
I would go with Mr. Hill. I think that the last issue that needs to be resolved is what percentage, if you're worried about a takeout window, then you need to set some sort of maximum percentage of service area that is outdoors versus indoors.
And we could start with two to one.
50% or, I don't know, two to one, I don't know what that percentage is.
Like the second story rule, the outdoor has to be half of...
Two to one in which direction? Two to one?
You can't have more than, the outside can't be more than half as big as the inside.
Okay, so basically...
You getting that conversation, Mr. Anoni?
I have a big problem.
I know you do, but, but, but we're looking for...
So as I understood Commissioner Hill's comment, not more than half, correct? Outside, that's fine.
So...
You had 1,500 square feet total for, just to pick a number, 500 could be outside and 1,000 inside.
So you're saying one-third?
Oh, that's one-third.
I'm saying, I said two to one.
Two to one in service area.
Two to one, that's correct.
So the idea would be...
10,000 square foot max?
So, I think...
Just a second, let me see, I'm seeing if I can count to three.
I mean, I would, we were batting around maybe no, 40%, that no more than 40% be outside.
So that would be, the condition would be that they shall not exceed 10,000 square feet of service area, whether indoor or outdoor, and no more than 4,000 square feet of service area may be located outdoors?
Yes.
No, 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 40%, not, not, because the numbers can be different.
Okay, so we're gonna say per tenant instead of a total amount of...
Let's not do it, let's not do it per tenant, though, in case one is a little bigger and then one is smaller. Why don't we do aggregate?
All right.
Then you could have one tenant with a window and 4,000 square foot of service, and everyone else is indoors.
Yeah.
So that, that's...
Okay.
Can I clarify, maybe I can take a whack at clarifying the concern here. The 10,000 is for restaurants. That includes kitchen, bathroom, whatever, whatever is a part of a restaurant. So that, that remains. We don't touch that 10,000. And then when you're in any individual restaurant, you'll assess it then. What is the service area there apart, subtracting the kitchen and then all the other non-service area things, and you'll be able to derive that proportion that you can put outside.
Craig, I have a question.
Just a second, just a second, just a second.
Am I cut out of this?
No, 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 I'll get back to you. I'm just trying to see whether there's a consensus on, at least in the direction we're going, and then I'll come back to you. Is that something that you find not offensive?
Well, I'm just confused, because I don't, say that again, Commissioner Hill, I'm not quite following what you're...
Well, I think part of the confusion was the 10,000, some people maybe were thinking that that...
First is a consensus that 10,000 square foot service area would be...
No, stop. It's not 10,000 square, service area. It's 10,000 square feet of restaurant. The service area, we don't know that, because we don't know the proportion between how big a kitchen is versus a service area, blah, 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 blah.
But that's my point. I want the service area to still be 10,000, so you only get outside what you took away from your kitchen.
They don't, nobody's gonna get 10,000 service area, because part of the 10,000 is already the kitchen and so forth.
They were not granted service area. They were granted square footage.
Right, agreed.
So you wanna give them more?
No, the argument on one side is that when this was approved for this many restaurants, it was assumed they would have some outdoor service area, but it was never defined. And so we're seeking to get a definition here of how much service area was intended to be allowed here so that we can have some kind of enforceable... I'm just saying, that's the, that's the argument. So the other argument is that there was assumed to be no outdoor service area.
In 2008, who assumed there was outside service area? I participated in the meeting.
So that's, that's the first question, is whether you're gonna allow any outdoor service area, so...
Yeah, now, in, just a second, is that, you really, is, your position is there should be no outdoor service area? No, they can have, they got 10,000 square feet. The outside and the inside account for 10,000. They can put whatever portion they want outside, but it's the 10,000 square feet of restaurant space. So as I understood what Mr. Anoni was saying earlier on, about an hour and a half ago, was that they are allowed 10,000 square feet of restaurant space. And his argument was, it doesn't say anything at all about outdoor space or indoor space. So what he was offering was, you take the 10,000 square feet of service area and you move it out.
Yeah, that you end up with two different 10,000 square foot numbers. That you have the floor area number that does include kitchen and bathrooms and whatever it includes. And then in addition and separate, on top of that, you impose a condition now that we cannot have more than 10,000 square feet of service area that includes both indoors and outdoor service area. So, because the building part, the floor area part is already clear, that's your FAR, your built structure. Some of that will be office, office, storage, kitchen. And so the 10,000 square foot service area limitation that I was proposing before would mean you take all of the areas where patrons could possibly be served, and that is limited to 10,000 square feet, so you know it can never be too much. And then I thought where Commissioner Hill was going was not to allow too much of that ever to be outdoors. And we're fine with that, and I was gonna suggest that we'd have the 10,000 square foot limitation, new limitation on service area, no more than 40% of which can be outdoors.
The only question then is to this new idea of 10,000 square feet of total service area. We don't have a clear sense of how that interacts with the scope of the whole project. How much, how much of the walkways and public spaces does that eat into?
That's where the concept of gross service area came in, because it doesn't exclude walkways. It's a perimeter of the entire area that is used to serve food.
But our problem is, we don't have a definition of service area. We just went through a hearing where we had 499 square feet get whittled down to, and it was all what you would call service area, no restaurant, no bathrooms, no nothing. And it got whittled down to 199, because they defined it this way instead of that way, okay? We need a definition of service area. If we can't come up with one, they never got an entitlement for outside service, okay? We can define what a service area is for this project.
Let me ask, let me ask a favor. If we break it down to the first question, do we agree that, that a given tenant in this facility, in this whole, you know, front lot, could have outdoor service, a place where they kind of rope it off?
Yes.
Okay, so we agree?
I agree. Yes, for God's sake, yes.
So do we want to, as a commission, figure out those rules, or do we let the first applicant bear a guinea pig?
Say, come on.
No, 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 realistically, do we...
Say what you just said in here.
Do we want to figure out the rules here, in terms of a condition placed on this overall property, or do we want the first couple of tenants to sort this out?
You know why we want, we want to sort it out? Is because every tenant that's every condo has had a different way to do it.
I agree.
That's what we're trying to do.
And we never gave them the entitlement. So we're giving them something, so we should be able to define what it is.
It's supposed to have 10,000 square feet of restaurant space. If we do it where they, we're measuring service area, we're giving them more than 10,000 square feet of restaurant space.
Well, the only, the only trade-off I'd give, no, no, no.
Sounds like that's coming out of your pocket.
Wait, one, one second, I just wanna, Steve, just for sake of argument, I wanna point something out. So let's say that you did count the 10,000, only what they have, the restaurant inside and outside, then they'd effectively be leasing out that extra space to an office anyway. And so you either, you're then trading, but then you're trading office space for kitchen use. And it seems like the impact on parking, et cetera, would be comparable. So I don't see it as, I see the trade-off as that, that operating space for the restaurant facility, what's its impact to parking, et cetera.
I'm just, you know, I mean, making up rules at the last minute, changing them is difficult. Every time we, every time we've seen that happen, next time it comes up, we're upset, because we did it the first time, because we can't do it.
But if we don't do it, what's gonna, the first applicant, whoever has the biggest checkbook is gonna define it for us, and it's gonna be pushed on.
Yeah, and why do you think we have a problem with no but?
Could I make one possible suggestion that might address Commissioner Hill's? I think I understand where you're going, because what you wouldn't want is, you draw a little circle around this table, and that table, and that table, and you exclude all this stuff, and that's certainly not what I intend. So maybe you say, consisting of cohesive geometric, or cohesive geometrics-like designs, so it's like either circles or rectangles, so you don't get to separate out where you're walking between the tables or the space between the tables. I've got a square patio, the whole darn patio is the service area.
If we just add the term gross service area and define the gross service area as a perimeter, or the interior area of the perimeter where food is being served, isn't that, isn't that what you, what you wanna go for?
Care part of it. You have to exclude gaming the system by, by, well, my example was Chick-fil-A. It's got no interior, none.
But that's where the 40% exterior comes from. Look...
And the city will have to approve it, because we'll have to submit the tenant improvement permits.
They don't have any against Chick-fil-A? It really is, you know, it is a question of counting to three. And Commissioner Hill, are you on board with what we're talking about here or not?
What are we talking about?
No, I'm asking Commissioner Hill.
That'd be a 10,000 square foot service limit?
I feel like we're trying to accomplish several different things here, one of which is John's sort of legitimate concern that we don't have the standard, and we have an opportunity to maybe establish one now. But then I don't know if, you know, at 11:00 PM, this is the time to be setting the standard.
You don't have to set a standard for the whole city. You just have to address your concerns about this project.
We're dealing with...
So if you wanna define it as a perimeter around where food service is occurring or something like that, to square it away for this project, that's fine.
And just as another thought, one, another similar option would be to put a limit that says, you know, within 20 feet of, or some numerical, something, I don't know.
Okay, I mean, the first question is, it's been proposed that there's a 10,000 square foot on service area separate from the other calculation for the restaurant square footage. Is, are there three votes to start with that concept, and then we can figure out how to count that 10,000 square feet? Or is there not consensus for that, and we need to go back and do this a different way?
I'm uncomfortable setting a specific number for what that total gross service area is. We have a number for what the floor area of the restaurants should be. I feel like that combined with a strict limitation on what we could extend outside, that would, would get us what we need without having to specify...
So what are, what are you proposing as an alternative?
So, no, I think what, I think what Mr. Hill is saying, because it's different than what Mr. Anoni is saying. What Mr. Hill is saying is that you get 10,000 square feet, and that includes everything, and then you get to, you get to push out outside in some proportion, but you don't, you don't take that 10,000 square feet of area and move it over and say that now, now we're gonna count 10,000 square feet of service area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the need for that, and it's just to...
So perhaps...
To create a separate criteria called gross service area for the whole place.
Perhaps a simple way to do it is say, no more than 4,000 square feet outdoor dining.
That is essentially... That is essentially what we're proposing, except that gives you the flexibility to shift it around. And then I would want to then... But that still would... That doesn't satisfy John's Chick-fil-A concern because then you could say, hey, we're going to take 3,000 of it and turn it into a food court. So I think we want to say that the proportionality applies to each individual place rather than to...
I can go for that if we ban fast food.
So...
Well, what about... Let's explore that. If you went, if you say no more than 4,000 square feet of outdoor service and that every food service organization or every restaurant or whatever could have no more than 40% of its space outside...
If you have both, yeah.
That could work if we have some way to have somebody has no outside. No inside space.
And just to... Just to point out, fast food restaurants with drive-through are already restricted.
No more than 40% outside.
If there's no inside, then 40% of zero is zero.
No, because...
Okay. I think, so you were saying, I think Commissioner Chair Jennings, you were saying 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining is the limit and no more than 40% of the seating area for any restaurant shall be outdoors?
For each individual restaurant.
For any individual restaurant be outdoors. Is that correct?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Is that... Did you get pushback there?
I did. We would like some flexibility because one might want more, one might be less, so no more than 40% of the total and no individual restaurant more than 50%.
Have you got a formula that we might want to consider?
I started at 33% to use these numbers, and you pushed it to 40, and now you want to push it to 50? Let's leave it at 40.
Can we put something like no restaurant...
If you make my client leave the room, I'll give you a different answer.
No restaurant can have more than a third of its space exterior?
They just... He just said 40%. You proposed 40%, they're asking for 50%.
No.
I may have misspoke.
So no more than 40% in the aggregate with no individual restaurant having more than 50% outside.
Yeah, so it's 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining is allowed, and you're asking for 50% of seating for any restaurant shall be no more than 40... You're saying that no more than 50% shall be of any seating shall be outdoors, and what was proposed by Chair Jennings was 40%. Is that right?
No.
No?
Restate it again.
So no more than... Okay, so in the aggregate, no more than 40% can be outdoor dining.
4,000 square feet.
And I think it's easier to say than absolute number two. No more than 4,000 square feet outdoor dining. And then separately, for each individual restaurant, no individual restaurant may have more than 50% of its service area outside.
No. Not service area.
I would go with what we were originally just getting at, that, but 40-40. I think once we start saying 50% outside, then that starts to get the outside, starts to get out of control.
Okay, so how are you going to define service area? Well, you didn't say that.
We're not saying service area. I think we've changed...
You said total development square...
We're saying outdoor dining. So that would be seating, right? Isn't that what we're talking about here?
Correct.
So we're saying 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining and the 40%, no more than 40% of seating for any individual restaurant shall be outdoors. That was the proposition, and they're asking for 50%.
And the 10,000 square feet that they were granted in 2008 is gross square footage.
Okay. The gross square footage...
Not their footage, not service area. Gross square footage.
That's already the 10,000 square foot.
That's not the way we stated.
This is a separate additional condition.
They're not changing the gross square footage of restaurants. This is an outdoors... This is an outdoor seating restriction.
But John wants to clarify that seating is defined as the gross seating area.
What we're saying is they got 10,000 square feet, and we're saying 40% of that they can put outside.
Right.
Is that right?
And the 10,000 is...
No, that's different from what's being proposed.
Yeah, I think Trevor had it right, and what it ends up with is this new condition of 10,000 square feet. Excuse me, we were switching it and just going to 4,000 square... No more than 4,000 square feet outdoor dining, period. Additionally, no individual restaurant may have more than 40% of its area be outdoor dining.
Of its seating.
And all I'm adding is additionally, the 10,000 square feet that was granted in 2008 is development area.
Well, I think that's already the case if I'm understanding it. That is your FAR area.
I think if I can get at what, John, what your concern was, you were saying we're basically giving them for free this extra portion that's beyond the 10,000 and saying you get the 10,000 restaurant plus you get 40% of service area beyond that outside. You're saying we're giving them that for... And my question then would be, what use of the overall shopping center space are we losing to obtain the benefit of that extra outdoor dining? But what would be giving up? It seems like it's a benefit.
All I care about is that we don't play games on the service area and stuff inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing any... The service area is not being used as a term here.
If you're giving them extra space, what are we getting back?
I don't know if people heard you, but that was my question. It was like, we're giving them...
If I'm giving something up, what am I getting back? Would you rather have all indoor dining in Malibu, for God's sake? I'm not saying they can't have outdoor backspace. I'm not arguing about that. They can have...
No, you are.
The trade-off is with more tables outside, we have less area to play frisbee or something, right? I mean, I don't know what the uses there are in the space.
No, the outdoor dining is... Any outdoor uses like that occur in the open space area, so you're not losing anything. It's still open. It's just, part of it will be used in this way.
All right.
But that's typical.
Trevor, give us...
Okay, so the...
Us Beth has something here. Wait a minute.
The last iteration was that there shall be no more than 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining area and no more than 40% of the seating for any restaurant shall be outdoors.
All right. Is that...
Yes.
Is that where you are? All right. Can I get... Are there three votes to support that?
No.
Just a second.
We do need a clarification, though. And that, do you agree that that seating area is defined as the box defines that whole area?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Then I'm good, as long as we need to document that somehow, but then I'm good with this.
Say it again for me.
So it's what Trevor read with the definition of all seating area is defined by the exterior perimeter of that seating area.
All right. I'll support that. Craig?
Can I ask a question?
I'm just trying to get to three, and then I'll let you talk. Yes, okay, we've got three votes. John, what is it?
Do we have... Does this motion include the fact that the 10,000 square feet is not jack-aroundable? You can't say all that, 10,000 square foot...
We didn't use that.
It's really only two.
Non-jack-aroundable is specifically included in this motion.
Just to drill in on jack-aroundable, I think what John is saying is that you... Okay, so each restaurant has enclosed space of 10,000 square feet in total. I think what John's saying is that once we do the additive, the 4,000 plus interior service space, we still end up with a 10,000 square foot service.
So it's not jack-aroundable because... I can't believe I said that. Because the building will be built, and if it's not the restaurant, then we're exceeding something else. It would have to be retail or office or something. So we have a total limit, so it's not jack-aroundable.
The 10,000 square foot limit is what's built inside the buildings. And what we're talking about is what outdoor seating is allowed beyond that.
Okay, so you've got... John, have you got another subject you want to bring up? You said finally before that, so...
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this. Trevor, we're still under this discussion about carryout liquor and how we had 18 in that area. Is this something we just deal with on a CUP basis?
Yeah, there's no alcohol request at this point in time, right? This is...
I could use a drink.
You got one here?
Okay, so there's nothing proposed.
I got one question for Bonnie, if we could.
One question for whom?
Bonnie.
For Bonnie.
Bonnie, in the town-city overlay, one of the monument general sign requirements, it says the provisions of LIP section 3136A7 shall not apply. What is that? You know what that is? It's got something to do with the way signs, the direction signs are faced.
I will look it up for you. I don't know offhand.
You can't have... Signs can't be lit.
Signs aren't actually in this application.
Can they be lit up?
They... Signs can have... Yes, they can have lighting, but it's subject to a 30-day review by the planning director to make sure it's not too bright.
And it would be dark skies compliant will come...
Because I read this, it has something to do with signs not facing the neighborhood or something, and I couldn't figure out why they can light them up, why I don't want to keep them away from looking at the neighborhood.
Chris, have you got further issues you want to raise?
Let's see, I did have a couple notes. There was a question we should come before about where trees will be, et cetera. You called out that there will be trees of a certain size coming in. Will some of those be planted indirectly in the ground, not just in the planters, correct?
Approximately 90% of them will be planted directly into the ground. No more than about 10% of them are going to be in places where they'd be in planters.
Okay. And then I did want to thank you and team for putting this one together. It helped me, but I didn't know the distinction in the light green versus that dark green.
So the light green is both open space and landscaping. So some of these terms aren't defined, and so landscaping itself isn't defined, so we use the common acceptance that it's where vegetation is. So those places are lawns. So that's why we distinguish it. It's a tiny, as you can see, a tiny fraction of the area. The dark green is landscaping that is not... Yeah, it's like bushes and trees and stuff.
Okay, and thanks for putting those together. Otherwise, yeah, it was just this... Oh, oh, the last one. Storage in a basement. What was the last on that, Bonnie? Where did we end up with that question we had earlier?
Subterranean space does not count towards the floor area ratio, so it's not counted towards the square footage.
But do we have a TDSF limit we...
Not for commercial. It's... All the standards are based on floor area ratio and gross floor area.
And it's not a floor area because?
It does not count against TDSF.
It does not count by definition of floor area ratio. Subterranean areas below grade do not count towards that calculation.
Okay, so they were given a certain number of square feet, and that just disappeared? That extra square footage? Just... It's there, but it's not there?
I don't know what you mean.
Well, there's about 5,000 or 6,000 square feet down there, and because of that definition, it just doesn't exist?
It's not counted...
When you count square footage?
Whoever came up with the zoning code standards did not want to count subterranean floor area towards the FAR limit.
Then can we add as a condition on that subterranean here that it's strictly for storage? Because I wouldn't want to see office space down there, what have you, and I think that would be fair to the applicant.
You can add conditions related to the use of that if you want.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a condition that it's storage only.
Yeah, which I just asked for, yeah. Okay.
I don't think there's any doubt about that.
Hit your microphone.
Okay, so the condition to...
I probably want to put the valet on.
For the basement facilities to be limited to storage use? Okay. How do we... What's the... Is there a term to refer to that area, Bonnie? We're limiting the storage... What area is being limited to storage areas?
Subterranean.
Subterranean development?
Okay, all subterranean areas are limited to parking or storage. Is that right?
Jim, your discussion... Do you hear this discussion?
Yeah, that's what we planned. This is all storage. So the condition, you would have a problem with that?
The condition would state that all subterranean areas are limited to parking or storage.
Well, it could be equipment or things like that.
Storage.
I don't... I think equipment rooms are usually not thought of as storage, but as long as we're clear, that's what it means.
Storage, including equipment rooms. Does that work?
Okay.
Does that work for everybody here?
Works for me, yeah.
All right.
That's all I had, and it's just...
Okay, so it's 11:15. Maybe we can get actually a motion. I'll make the motion. I'm going to move staff recommendation with the changes proposed by staff with the changes that we have given to Trevor as being the subject of consensus.
Bonnie had one answer for him before we go, Jim. I had one question she was going to look up.
The 3.15.6.
3.13.6A7.
I thought you were reading... You're reading from the overlay standards about running signs?
I'm reading... This is the town-city overlay. It's under the monument signs and general sign requirements, and it just says the provisions of that section of the LIP will not apply, and I'm just trying to figure out why.
Right.
Because I think it's got the...
Oh, it's...
Signs facing the neighborhood.
Oh, 3156A7.
It'd be quicker to just put in a condition that no signs can face any neighborhood.
I have it. It's in LIP 3.15.6.8.7, and then the reference is prohibited locations. No signs shall be located in such a manner as to face in the direction of or be visible to property in a residential district when such sign would be less than 200 feet from such residential property unless such sign faces and is parallel to a public right-of-way.
It's too close to residents to follow that, right?
Yeah, excuse me?
Isn't it too close to residences to comply?
They wouldn't apply anyway.
Especially if you can light them up. You don't want lit up signs.
You can't light signs anyway.
Yeah, just, why don't you say that you could?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you're seconding Chair Jennings' motion? Can we?
Seconding, checking, seconding my motion?
Okay, that, that motion was, uh, staff's recommendation is explained by Bonnie with the.
Just a second.
With the amendments, um, that were given to me by consensus, including all the changes that were proposed by Bonnie during the staff's presentation as modified during the, uh, by the planning commission and given to me by consensus.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Steve?
Make a friendly amendment that I want to be, the condition of the provision to, that, in the LIP for the monument signs, I'd like to say, put a condition in that they can't have lit signs facing the neighborhood, facing.
They can't have, can't have monument signs?
Can't, they, you can, this section, what, the, the section that provisions of the LIP shall not apply, what that section is, is signs that can, within 200 feet of a neighborhood, right? And, and Bonnie says you can light them up.
Okay, so you want that, you want that restriction that's in the overlay district taken out?
Taken out.
But that would be, I don't know, I would suggest that since you're directly overruling the legislative intent there of what they had.
You want it taken out or you want them not lit?
I want them not, well, I'll, you're right. Make them not lit.
Okay, so any, any sign facing a neighborhood?
Cannot be lit.
Is, is that acceptable? Any issue with that?
I mean, it might.
I think I, so let's just talk specifics. I think that means nothing facing backwards because that's where the neighborhood is.
Should we say any, any sign facing north cannot be lit?
Because that's fine.
Does that, does that work?
That works.
That's right. All right. I'll take the, I'll, I'll accept the friendly amendment. You accept it, right? Okay, so we're, any further discussion?
I just would like if we could read this section about how we're dealing with the square foot because that went back and forth a lot. So I just want to make sure that Trevor can kind of play back.
This is the condition about the outdoor dining?
Correct.
Okay, so that condition is, uh, there should be no more than 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining. And that area shall be defined to include, um, all areas surrounding the perimeter of the dining area with nothing taken out in, in between, and no more than 40% of, of seating for any restaurant shall be outdoors.
And maybe all area defined by the perimeter?
Yeah, it's the area within the perimeter.
All area within the perimeter of the outdoor dining, what shall be included.
Okay, I'm good.
Hold the roll, please.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None, it is unanimous.
Something other than the 99 seats.
And they would have to amend their CUP for that, and it doesn't allow more than 99 seats, given the use.
John?